For a number of people for committee meeting, especially. So I want to recognize, excuse me, we have our board president, Scotty Cooper here, and board member Ms. Schelling here too, sitting out there on the committee. So they're sitting amongst y'all that are in attendance as well. Thank you all for coming out tonight. Before we move on to adoption of the agenda, I just want to make a couple of statements before we move forward. Our country is in a difficult time right now, and I know that we are all feeling the tension and the pressure in general. And I know in our community, I've seen an escalation of division, of tension, of pressure. And that said, I just want to remind us that we're here at this curriculum committee meeting because we have some people have questions, some people have concerns, some, most people just want to understand why certain things are happening the way that they're happening. And so I want to encourage us to all come with a spirit of trying to find understanding and common ground and to listen to one another and hear about, you know, what we can be doing to make Monroe City Schools the best place for all of our students and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students here. So with that, I just want to take a moment of silence just to kind of get centered, get grounded in that and remind us that we're all in that same place, that we're here for a common goal. Thanks, let's take a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. I also want to thank Superintendent Moore and for being open and taking my call about a rumor that's going around that I apparently reached out to the governor of the state to have him removed from office. That is not true. It's kind of a ridiculous notion, quite honestly, and obviously there is somebody out there trying to create a little more division here, and we're putting a stop to that right now. I also reached out to Ms. Schelling because I was told the rumor came from her, and she was very clear that did not. So just wanted to put that out there too, to just kind of allay any fears that that's, I've never reached out to any governor level on this one, so that's not. Okay, that said, we're going to get on to our curriculum committee meeting. Can I have an adoption of the agenda?
So, second.
Okay, it's going to move in second and all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Hearing none opposed, that passes, all right. An approval of minutes from the August 1st curriculum committee meeting.
So, second.
Okay, first and second, all in favor.
Aye, aye.
Hearing none opposed, that passes. All right, we're going to move on to old business. At our last board meeting, we had a presentation from Dr. Brian Bush about changes made to Charouse and some of the programming for some of our students. It's just seniors, is that right? For our seniors?
Nine through twelve.
Oh, pardon me, nine through twelve. And I felt like he gave a very thorough explanation of what the changes were and why they're happening and kind of where they came from, but some people reached out with additional questions. And so we have it on the agenda again tonight, so I appreciate you coming back up again tonight to talk about this. And Mr. Moore, did you have any, were there any other questions that came to you about it, or is this just?
Well, I just want to share a reference to the alternative school. We have been hybrid with students since COVID. And that is nothing new. We have had students to be on campus, high school students, and students to be virtual. And in reference to the changes that were made going to virtual for nine through twelve students, that was for those students who were creating violent acts, weapons and those things to create a safer environment for those elementary and middle school students that are on that campus. We did not make that decision lightly. We also visited Washtau Parish, which is a neighboring school. They have been virtually nine through twelve for years, literally for years, since years when I was in child with that attendance. And there being, we have been virtual for years as well. Our Johnny Roberts Boys Home kids have been virtual for years since COVID, and our nine through twelve kids have been alternating because trying to create a safe environment at the alternative school. But Dr. Bush will chime in on that, and a lot of the myths and untruths has been told about that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, I appreciate your statement. And actually, actually, you know, you say Washtau Parish is nine through twelve, they're actually seven through twelve with their virtual program. And I've reached out to other districts around the state, and we aren't, this isn't something revolutionary that's going on with us or anything like that. There are several districts around the state, just all across the state, that have gone to virtual education for many of their students that have been expelled. As is more stated, even a lot of these, a lot of these, a lot of these students that are committing, are committing violent acts on campus. These are egregious acts.
Can you give us an example of, of, just a couple of examples of what we're talking about with violent acts and what other districts have done this?
Gang fighting is one, and I'm talking gang fighting up to the ones. Let me move it closer, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, so we're talking gang fighting, up to putting kids in hospital, weapons.
The children have been hospitalized as a result of these, these students' behavior?
Yeah, absolutely.
So that's what you're looking at? You're not looking at a kid who, I'm trying to think of what?
I mean, what we have not encountered are students that, multiple referrals, you know, a kid with nine, ten, eleven, just kids clowning in class. We have not encountered that up to this point. As a matter of fact, at the beginning of the school year, a lot of those children had transitioned from last year to this year. We allow those kids to have personal, go back to school with the understanding that, hey, this is what we have moved forward. As I stated in the last board meeting, I've spoken with all first name orientations, every single one, and I plan on putting something out to all the students again to make them more aware of what's going on and how they're moving with this. And speaking of Washtau Parish, Central Parish is one, St. Brian Parish in the South, in South Louisiana, a few parishes have already started to move this way. But in speaking to Washtau Parish, you know, one thing that he, he reached out to me and said was like, hey, you got to give it time, and it has absolutely worked for us. He said, this has absolutely worked. He said, it's worked so well, we've moved it into middle schools. He said that at one of their schools, I won't name the school, but they went from twenty-nine fights in one semester, implemented the program, it went down to three. So, you know, so for us, the consequences and the deterrents is worth much more, and keeping our kids saying, of course, at school, it's much more than anything else. And so he even mentioned that, you know, they do have one school where there's a bit of, where they have some altercation going on between some boys and some others, but he said, the other schools, they're all well behaved. He said that they are, every high school is very well behaved because all kids understand the consequence. And, you know, sometimes people respond to consequences.
And may I, may I interject, Superintendent Moore, when you were over child behavior, health and wellness, I recall just a couple of years ago, parents, teachers, administrators, various said that there were violent offenders and not getting consequences, not being removed from schools, disrupting schools, causing a lot of havoc, and screaming at us to do something about it. And so this is one of those answers to it, and it's, like you said, not an unprecedented?
No, this is, this absolutely is not unprecedented. So we even go a little bit further with, Matt, remind, we, you know, Matt President, we even go a little bit further with, I met with, again, with workforce development last week, and we're finalizing the deal on getting those children jobs, because the questions that come to me are, hey, what are these kids going to do at home? And so my thing is, eight to twelve there at school, as long as they're all in, then from twelve to whenever they can go work, and we're going to supply them with the jobs. We have some agencies that are already signed on to get these kids work, you know, social workers, that we meet with them every Thursday. And we have, you know, right now, we have a very small number of students, and we have an even smaller number of children that have, that have been expelled this year, a very small, single digit. At this time last year, it was high double digits. Oh, yeah, absolutely. So right now, it's in the low low single digits.
So where does that?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, they, they, you know, and so, you know, we've, you know, we've looked at the numbers of the students that are already there or already in virtual, and the vast majority, vast, vast majority of our students are doing well, you know, they are doing well. One student has already completed a few courses through edutainment, and so he's on track to finish more courses as he goes along, so.
How many students do you have that are doing the at-home schooling in this situation?
One.
Is there only one right now?
Yeah, right now, from, from, from what we have from this year, or this year of students that have come on to virtual, it's just one.
Oh, okay.
Yes, one student, yes. And we had a few transitioning from the prior year, just finishing off the time, maybe we'll finish off the time pretty soon. But, but yeah, just one student right now, and that was, you know, and the act was, it was a violent act. So, you know, and I mean, we're not just, we're not throwing kids away. What I would ask of you guys, of the board, is to give us time, let this work out, let us look at the data, and we'll explain the data to you guys as, as the years go on or as this year, you know, comes to an end. But, but I'm absolutely certain, and I appreciate it's more of a recording than it's, than it's a journey, but I'm absolutely certain this will work for Monroe City Schools. Our schools are safe schools, and we want our schools to be, continue to be safe schools because the perception in the community has to be that, that, hey, when you walk in that building, you're, you're good to go. So I, you know, and we, we don't want anyone to think that our, that our children are put in violent situations, and when violence does happen, we remove that from our schools.
One question that I'll turn over to the committee members that was brought to me was for anyone, and in this case, it's just one individual, but for anyone making home visits to a violent offender, what is, what are the safety protocols we're putting in place for that?
No, we don't, we don't, no, we don't make home visits. No, we don't, we don't make any home visits to any students. If there is, if the student is having trouble, we do have one student that had a little bit of trouble, and so we told that student that, hey, you can come in for a day or two, we'll get you on track, and then we'll move back forward. All visits to the students via their, their school mentor, done virtually if they can't come up, social workers, I've instructed them that, hey, if you need to meet with the student, make sure you get these Zoom codes out early. Everything is done virtually if the student can't be person to person in our building. So now we don't, you know, now I'll make a home visit if it's something different, but, you know, I protect myself.
Okay. All right, thank you, Dr. Bush. Now, we'll take questions from other folks after the committee members speak and board members, but anybody who does have a question, even board members, sorry y'all, the request is made for y'all to come to the microphone so it can be heard for anybody who's on virtually and for the recording. So committee members, any questions? Questions from board members? Okay, does anybody else have a question about the Charouse program?
Okay, I'm ready to answer.
And say your name in the microphone, I mean, I know we all know.
Good evening, thank you, thank you, thank you, Dr. Bush, this is Vicki Kratzler. I'd like to ask, we know that in the past, we've had a resource officer there, and listening to you say how many fights that we've had, and if you look in the budget book for last year, we had a $35,000 budgeted for a resource officer, but it was not spent, could you address that?
Yeah, and as far as budgetary, she's, I know.
I'll answer that, Dr. Bush. Yeah, that, 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 we found out, discovered that was a coding situation because there's an off-duty detail officer that's at Charouse, and so that was just a coding situation that we discovered after talking, why it was, why it was showing that.
Why it was happening?
Yeah, but there is an officer that's at Charouse, but it's, it's not a school resource officer, not an SRO like in our high schools, this is an off-duty detail, and so it was just code.
Are they there every day?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Ms. Kratzler. Thank you, Dr. Bush, was there anything?
If you guys ever have any questions about it, I'm willing, I'm always available. You guys can text me the question or whatever, and I'll have, you know, an answer if you guys.
Yeah, and I know that firsthand because I reached out to you about something I, I had a question about last week, and you were very quick to respond to that. Okay, all right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to our next item, and it's under new business. We're going to delve into the accelerated reading program. So we're going to ask for kind of an overview of the changes that were made and why they're made, what that was based on, and what's filling the place of AR.
And as Ms. Anderson comes forward, AR, I do want to share something. I think that there was a misconception that one of our schools had actually purchased AR, and that the district didn't allow them to have that at the time, or the reality is that there was actually a requisition sent in that was signed by the wrong person, not the principal. So AR was never paid for, even at the school that we discussed earlier, it had never been paid for, and here's the documentation and reference to all of that.
Do you know how they got access?
But since that time, and see, you asked about access, I don't know, but I do know this, once we realized that that was an issue for a certain few schools, we did allow them, they chose to use AR, to order AR for their school. AR was funded every year in our district the past 20 years by Carmel Hill, and that Carmel Hill funding is not with our district either. So the district never paid for AR, and AR is not a, a, a program that's our literacy for us, it's, it's just an additional, it's an add-on supplement that was provided by Carmel Hill for the past 20 years. Sam.
First of all, I also wanted to add, remind that you sent several questions in to us, and I just wanted you to know that we have embedded those five pieces within the context of the agenda ideas, so they need to thank you for those all.
No, no, yeah, I got that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
And in the packet of materials that were placed on board docs, I did also place a copy of the April 30th, a letter that came from Carmel Hill, which indicated their decision to discontinue services or partnerships with Monroe City, and I've just included that, and also a email, an email from Allison Pageage, letting the Louisiana partners, which was Monroe City, Lincoln, and also I think Caddo Parish, letting them know about Carmel Hill decision. And I just wanted to put that in there because I think also there had been some discussion about, you know, people not knowing that Carmel Hill or that accelerated reading was actually going to be discontinued, and I wanted to place it in there so you knew that they, everyone knew, because this went out to district staff and principals and as far back as April 2024. And so I put that in there just for documentation purposes. And colleagues, Mr. Jared Mayhaw and Ms. McCarty, Ms. McCarty being a principal at the time, will also speak to that fact in just a moment. I think as Mr. Moore stated, it's important to note that Carmel Hill fully funded our accelerated reading program. We started the program back in 2005, and it started with Margie Godwin, who was a librarian at Cypress Point Elementary. She brought this program to the district, and through her contacts with Carmel Hill, she was able to bring the program to the entire school district just from that initial implementation at Cypress Point. And for 20 years, we had Carmel Hill fund, and the reason that I put the data sheet in is because I wanted, I took you back all the way to 2013 with Dibbles data and with League data, and this is simply showing students that are below benchmark and students that are below mastery. And as you can see, we've seen the largest, since COVID, we've seen the largest gains, I guess you could say, in the last year. That is largely to our focus on core instruction and intervention. Intervention pieces being our HDT, our Lexia, our high dosage tutoring, and our design uses. And so I just wanted to put this to show that for 20 years, we had a program, but there is no significant growth that has been demonstrated in using that program. And I think it's important to, to also say that because of the fact that accelerated reading was a program to motivate students to read, it's really difficult to gauge that impact that it had on reading with our students and it's going, our systems are concerned. But we have been able to see that impact in using Lexia or our literacy, and we've been able to see it, we've learned, you know.
When were you also, you have, Lexia was in 2023?
Yeah.
When was that, was that in the same year?
I need to say, 2023 probably about the same time, yeah. Well, we skipped the law when we started in last year, we're starting, the upper grade started a few years before we started. But I do want to say that with all of the mandates that, you know, the state passed down for teachers and schools to implement, put in place, it's, it was very difficult for schools to be able to implement accelerated reading and get all of those other pieces in. And so when Carmel Hill decided they were no longer going to partner, it wasn't our decision to end AR, but it was the committees and, and working with our team, it was our decision not to come to the board and ask that we purchase accelerated reading, primarily because of the fact we saw, and I listed it in your packet, various reasons why, because of our literacy focus in the district, we wanted to focus on comprehension, we wanted to focus on not only reading but writing, and we wanted to focus on strengthening our students for good to speak in their oral ability. Accelerated reading didn't allow us to do any of that. We're able to motivate our students to read without an accelerated reading program per se. We saw, first of all, you can go on Quizlet and print out an accelerated reading test and get the answers. So we asked ourselves, are we really knowing that our kids have read these books and can recall this information, or are we really testing how savvy our kids are in going accessing this material online? Because you can do this very easily.
Quick question, Carmel Hill, did they indicate why they were getting away after 20 years of funding this program?
Yes, yes, they're going to work with mental health, they want to put their focus in.
Right.
They had meetings with the district, by the way, that they included us in, for two years, letting us know this was coming, and they provided a transition plan for the district.
And approximately, how much were they spending on AR per year? I know that probably varied per year.
For the entire district, about $80,000.
$80,000. And are they going to take that $80,000 and now incorporate this into mental health in lieu of not sponsoring?
I know, I saw that, yeah.
Not with us. So I guess where I'm going is that $80,000 we're losing in the funding, is there any way we can approach Carmel Hill with a program that they may be good assistance with?
He's tried, he's tried that.
I reached out, I reached out, and we all tried. Which I, I reached out to their CEO, and I said, look, you want to study it, you can do it right here, and they weren't having it.
Another thing that I wanted to point out from the data was with the new accountability system, we've got to do things differently than we've ever done before if we want to be able to compete and be able to be successful under the new accountability system. With the new accountability system, our librarians will, they're effective, they will be evaluated using the new evaluation system, and it's, it's pretty rigorous, which doesn't, ignoring the librarian evaluation system, doesn't speak of them working with the program to get kids motivated to read. There are skills and there are, there are standards that they have to implement, and Mr. Mayhaw, I think that, and, and Mr. Mayhaw is out to facilitate with the library, and he works very closely.
Okay, so the librarians have their own scope and sequence, they have their own skills that they're required to teach children, their, their level, they, the evaluation system is going to judge how well they address those particular indicators in their curriculum. So they have their own curriculum they have to address. And so this is going to allow them more time to do that. Also, our back-to-school in-service, one of our premier librarians, who also teaches at the university level, came and brought ideas to our librarians on how we can promote reading, continue to promote reading in a positive manner to all children, not just those that want to read, but those that are even reluctant. So that our librarians can be placed, our libraries can be places where, that will be warm and inviting, and kids will want to come in and read. And so this will take, this, these opportunities that they were provided with, but that allowed them that opportunity to spend time doing that and not worried about whether kids are cheating on the AR test, which is doing nothing but just testing simple recall.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just did want to go back to what Ms. Anderson said about being notified that AR was going away, that Carmel Hill was pulling the funding. Prior, actually, to the letter, Ms. Pageage came by and visited with principals, visited with me, at that time I was principal at Lexington, and, you know, said that they're, they were doing everything they could to try to keep it and fight for it, but that it looked like it was going away. So before last year even began, in my ILT team, Ms. Flowers sat on that team with me, we discussed, you know, if it's going away, what, you know, what can we do? We do know that, you know, we're at a, a high point in our literacy, but we've got to grow, and when the higher you get, the harder it is to grow. We knew that the state was coming down with mandates of amounts of minutes or usage, usage time, or units completed for the Lexia and the Zern, which required the teachers to have set time for them to do that. And when we looked at our schedules and our teachers' schedules, the amount of time that they have in the day to do those things that are mandated, there wasn't time. And I told my staff, and I was like, okay, who wants to do it? If you want to do, continue to do AR, you can do it, but understand that you have to do these things that are mandated by the state first, because we have to grow our, our students. You know, if we're sitting at 83, we need to be at an 85 or an 86, you know, wherever we needed to get. So we kind of gave that, that option to our teachers last year to be a kind of an optional thing. It wasn't a, it wasn't a, you don't have to meet your goal, but you can, and we did reward those students who met their goal. But when the, you know, when the time, the end of the year came, I did see a stress reliever from our staff, because that was one more program that they have to monitor, one more program that they have to make sure kids go home with the books, then when they get back, that they have to monitor testing them. And when you're dealing with a five-year-old that you're trying to get logged into a computer system, even if it's something they do after two months of school, it takes time. And that time is one of the hardest things we have, you know, one of the biggest areas of problems we have. So that was, that, knowing that accelerated, accelerated reader program was going away was, was, it was common knowledge, it was known to principals and our, and our teachers that it was, and we were going to be moving forward with other literacy programs that were true literacy programs.
Sam, I have a question. You mentioned high dosage tutoring. Was that sort of funding doing that thing for that last three years, or is that something we had separate apart? Separate apart, one time, separate apart. Okay, good deal, thanks.
And we, we'll get into a little bit more on high dosage tutoring, Lexia and Zern in item D, so, so, you know, we'll get there on those specifically, but we're stick with AR right now.
And I do want to, one more thing, Mr. Moore touched on, that those school principals that after hearing the concerns of board members, after hearing the concerns of our community, we did sit down and determine that schools were interested in purchasing accelerated reading they could, and to date, those schools that have shown interest have taken the initiative to turn in their paperwork. And there are many others that have opted to do some other things on their campuses. I know that one school took the advice of the young lady for the back-to-school, and they are implementing Book Taco. I've heard great things from the students, we had an opportunity to give it to those students. Mr. Moore and I, last week, they, and they had students, and I got a chance to talk to them about it. Students are excited about that program and what it has to offer with, with those ladies who read those stuff.
You said Book Taco?
Yeah.
Can you explain that?
Book Taco, where kids are reading, and instead of, let me back up and kind of put the caveat to you that, one thing we also need to keep in mind is Carmel Hill funded not only accelerated reading, but they funded all these things, which we can't because of public funds and the, you know, the guidelines that are in place with federal funds, we can't do the things that Carmel Hill did. I'm telling you, Carmel, like Carmel Hill did some awesome things for our schools. And we have a lot of principals here today that can attest to the fact that it was awesome.
My child has an iPad from Carmel Hill for all those six million words she wrote in a year, I understand.
Those are things that we, we can't do, because they were private funds, they had a little more flexibility than what they could do with them, but we can't do that with our federal public and public funds. But what Book Taco does is students read and they gain points to play their game. And so the more points I get, then the more minutes I can spend playing the various games on Book Taco, so it's, and it's, yeah.
Ms. Lazuzu is here, she probably can speak on it because she's the school that's using Book Taco.
I can say a little bit about it.
Okay, please do.
I was picturing like a literal taco. I didn't know it was a program. Good evening, everyone. I really was not prepared to speak, but. Um, so Book Taco is very similar to AR except it's more of, looks kind of more like a video game type. And it has quizzes and it has games. It has, um, ways you can story elements. Just, it's got a whole lot more than AR had, and it's more interactive and things like that. And our kids are super excited about it. I was walking down the hall today and they were going, they were talking about something with points and this. And I said, are you talking about Book Taco? And they were, yes, we love it, we love it. So I think it was kind of a breath of fresh air after the AR and having high goals and all that. This is something, we just wanted something that made them want to read and not have to read. So, anyway, so they're loving it so far, but I don't know, you know, we've just gotten it, so I don't really know long term.
Mrs. Lazuzu is testing on Tuesday for Book Taco?
We tried to get our librarian to dress up like a taco.
Um, so one of the questions that I asked, um, was, you know, we, so we knew AR was going away, we knew the removal was. And, um, by the way, and I'm speaking to the average citizen that's here. You're hearing a lot about state mandates. If y'all aren't talking to your state senators and your state reps about all these things they pass for schools to do every year, and a lot of them are unfunded mandates, then you're missing the boat because a lot of stuff that school boards, school districts, our, our school personnel have to do comes from people who probably never set foot in a classroom. Okay, I digress. So, and one of the questions that I had, um, because we do have some state mandated programs, was that I would, I would like to see, if it hasn't been done, a district recommendation. Because I told you in an email, I said, you know, look, I started looking at AR and the data's not there. I was looking at journal articles and stuff about the impact of accelerated reader program. And the data's not there. The data says accelerated programs, um, if nothing else, are kind of neutral. Like they, they aren't necessarily bad, and in some cases, they make kids like not want to read, um, but they didn't really show improvement in score. So that, that was, when I did my, my journal article review research, because I was drafting an email, I was like, wait, this doesn't show that it does anything. So my question would be then, what, like as a district, can we take that leadership on of saying, okay, here's what data shows, if you want to go the route of doing something to encourage reading beyond what we're doing as a district, here's what we recommend. Um, have we done that or can we do that?
That's what we did at the back to school with the library. We worked with them and gave them those things that they could try. And then we, we're working with the principals to allow them to, on each one of their campuses, the autonomy, to determine what things they want to use in place of accelerated reading, what's supporting them and what's not.
Was, but is it like a, is it a program, a defined program, or just different techniques? All right, any questions from other board members or people in the community? We need to come to the microphone. And say your name, please, because you're here for that.
Hi, I'm Jessica Ryan Warner-Greason. I feel really funny talking to you through the microphone, so I just need you to say that. Because you're sitting right here next to me. No, I want you to sit next to me. I'm really interested in hearing more about this meeting that you had at the back to school function where you talked about that alternatives. I do think, and I'm not, not trying to pick up, I, I think communication in this district is severely lacking. I mean, yeah, we've seen that everybody got a notification, everybody that, that works at a school got a notification, but parents didn't get notified until we went back to school. That's shocking. It's like, oh my gosh, our world's exploding. Right, but I would think, and I mean, I would think that that would come from central office, but I don't know. You know, I just think that, that if it's going to be a district-wide mandate, that it would come from the district. You're talking about all these great alternatives and things that the librarians suggested, but parents weren't in that movie. A nice little infographic, you know, AR's going away, but the world's not ending. Here's five things you can do at home to promote reading. Like, these are the things that parents need and depend on from our school. And I mean, my kids already have a mastery. So the, the Lexia is terrible for her. Like, like she hates every moment of it. So what can we do so that she's getting some kind of benefit instead of being asked with that eighth grade level what punctuation comes with the end of a question?
And it's not just parents, the school board members too.
What?
And not by.
Oh, well, I, so, I want to, um, Jessica, thank you for your question and concern, and I, I think that's probably. Well, I want to say, I want to say lesson learned perhaps when it's something that maybe some schools and some parents really hung on to, that they're, that now, I, I mean, I don't necessarily want to speak for y'all, but that might be a lesson learned that next time around, if it's something that we think is going to have a big impact. But we also do need our principals to speak to our district to say, hey, our parents are going to have a problem with this. Let's make sure that they know, um, ahead of time or sense of communication home or something like that. I think that's what I'm hearing, what you said.
Just something ahead of time, like in April when we found out.
Did you want to say something more? Sorry, I interrupted you. Anyone else? Okay, sounds like we can put the accelerated reader discussion to bed. Um, perhaps, I, I, I mean, it made me move now, I don't know, because I don't, I don't have little ones, and I'm very thrilled about the end of the accelerated reading program. But, um, I, you know, I don't know if we could ask as a district, do we still need to send resources out to parents for how to help their, help encourage your child to read?
It definitely works.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, we're going to move on to next item, which is implementation and acquisition of curriculum procedures. So basically what this comes down to is this year we had, um, we had some blips. We, we had some changes that occurred. And, um, we had a particular curriculum, remind me, was that our social studies curriculum? Um, so that came, came late, came right before school started, and that materials came late to all the teachers. And so the, the suggestion was that perhaps as a district, and I've asked Ms. Schelling to consider this at our policy committee, um, that we look at that any new curriculum, barring any weird change that might come from a state level that comes after the date, but any new curriculum changes should be made by May fifteenth for the next school year, and then materials ordered. And we have to wait until after fiscal year starts, which is July first. So those, if it's made by May fifteenth, we should know what we have to order. So then, the suggestion I made, which is off just the top of my head, just picking a date, I think it's July, July fifteenth or something, that we have to have it ordered by.
It's June tenth. June tenth?
That would be a typo then, but I think I just sent Michelle when I was like July fifteenth. Let's just keep it fifteenth and the fifteenth, and that way it would make it easier to. Um, I, I, what are your thoughts on that?
I did, I really pulled over about instructional material acquisition timeline, which indicated, um, our academic team spending a survey that somebody just. And if what has been happening in the past is, for example, Dr. Robinson who works in K two, she ain't taking something out to principals regarding K two curriculum. But what this means, we will be sending a survey out for all content areas, all subjects, asking principals, kind of going, need this, what do you need, one of those materials that, um, you need ordered for the upcoming year. Anything that is existing will obtain those quotes from individuals and begin that process. In the new curriculum, we will, um, because only the team will review the content and scope of the materials and ensure alignment with district and state standards. If aligned, the curriculum will share with the parents and community in prep for the May curriculum meeting. And so then for, um, the new curriculum, the academic team will present the recommendations to the curriculum meeting and the curriculum committee, curriculum committee. And the curriculum committee will determine the recommendations to move to full board or involve to formally adopt the new curriculum material.
Can I pause you for a second? Just for those of you who aren't following along, because you probably didn't know. Um, on, you can go online on Board Docs and this timeline that she's talking about and other documentation supporting each item on our agenda is there for your viewing. Um, we have to post that at least three days, forty-eight hours prior to a meeting. So it's always up there for y'all's review, just for future reference. And I know it's hard for some of you who don't have this in front of you, but please, I'm so sorry.
And then we just talked about all quotes will be secured and requisitions will be completed and committed to the purchasing department by June. I have June tenth, I can change that to June fifteenth.
Don't we need to because of the fiscal year?
Well, well.
You determine that, I mean.
We need to have it in the purchasing department by their date so that they can go ahead and do those things that they can do beforehand. So they aren't July first generally to do, and we need to do the process. And, um, the purchasing department will give a managed purchase order. And I've already openly empowered about kind of making sure that we keep to a timeline because a big one happens even this year, except for Galapagos, which I will say, um, that was not the, something we would have typically liked to do, but because of the feedback we got from teachers in one of that curriculum, we kind of moved forward with it because teachers were really excited about it and, and really glad to have it for the upcoming school year. And Galapagos was great about allowing us to have access to the digital platform until those materials came in. I mean, I think everything decided that very high tech schools in Galapagos. They gave us access to the digital materials. I know sometimes though, that then, I'm a teacher, so I know you still like to have those materials in hand, but they did give us access to those things. So I do hear you when you say about ways, we would rather not have done that, but we've been trying to do what a lot of teachers were coming to us asking us for. And we knew where we had been through all the years of body bridges and the fact that so many were having to go and search for materials because it just wasn't embedded into that resource. So we were trying to give teachers something to make life a little easier. And, and, um, and trying to kind of do everything, toss it to them. But, um, we will have to, you know, just ensure that we work closely with purchasing to make sure once they receive those requisitions. Because what happened this year, no fault to our own, is a lot of the companies, because Mono City is not the only one ordering textbooks. So a lot of the companies had back orders. So we were getting emails, um, right into July, I think, middle of July, saying that certain items that we'd ordered were going to be on back order and wouldn't be, and I still think we're waiting on a couple of things that the secondary is up. And so what we had to do was print those items, but that was just because of issues within the company and being able to provide those materials and wasn't based on our not knowing something out there. Something we just can't control. But I will say that we, as soon as we find out those things, we jumped to trying to make sure we do whatever was needed to get those materials to the schools, which in a lot of cases are getting copied in the print shop and getting them out until they can get some part of the material in hand.
I would ask that we do some kind of quality control of that print shop, because I saw some of the copies that came out. Toner issues or something, I don't know, I, I saw some and they were out. But mine, I mean, that's minor, it's small, small, so. Um, great, I appreciate the timeline. I think that that's, that's a great direction to move our district forward. This certainly isn't, uh, the first time this has happened, this happened before you came on as our CAO, and it's, it's, hiccups happen to you, so. Um, but I, I, you know, it's lessons learned and, okay, so we, this didn't go great, created a little more tension and chaos for some folks. Um, but the timeline, I think, will, will help. Thank you for creating that.
And one other question, um, also places that, um, aligning on that Mono City's alignment to let teachers teach because of one of your questions that you submitted to us was talking about, um, bestie policy for autonomy in teaching as it applies to scheduling, methodology and teaching. And so I did want to note that we have put a lot of measures in place. We met with our administrators, principals, we met with assistant principals and curriculum coordinators on last week. Sharing with them the importance of relieving teachers of some of that cumbersome, cumbersome paperwork that they are required to do that does not align to instruction or them, um, you know, moving or meeting the needs of our students. So we've been working with them, less than plans per se, we want them to internalize the lessons. But most of the curriculum that we purchase nowadays provides you with a lesson plan. So there's no need for teachers to have to be bodyless playing when that material has already been provided. It just means them internalizing and analyzing those plans. Um, another thing is we've been working with our principals on cheering, um, their teachers to know. Those teachers that are your rock stars, that are getting it done each and every day, that have the data and the scores to show it, those teachers do need to be allowed a little more time to go into the classroom and do those things they know need to be done. But then there are some teachers that need that support to get to that rock star status. And so we're working with our principals to know what that looks like and how to put their teachers accord.
Do we still have the teacher leader program? In Mono City schools?
Teacher leader.
Do they let those every summer?
No.
No. My mind can't come up.
Are you talking about transatlantic, you know, transatlantic mentor?
I'm so sorry, I thought that we have like an internal teacher leader program in Mono City schools that would mentor other teachers who are newer.
Is that called literacy coaches?
No, it's not.
Mentor instructional leaders and master teachers.
Somebody knows what I'm talking about.
Mr. Moore, is there, is this information that we have here for tonight, is there a way we can do it? Subtle link to the agenda to where the public can have access to this information, or can they already have access? Got it, thank you. Everything that you have in front of you, they have access for a person, thank you.
I'm sorry, I think I interrupted you again. Anybody have any questions, Ms. Thompson? This is regarding curriculum acquisition and timeline.
Yes, thank you, um, thank you, question. I just want to comment here, the first step in March refers to the academic team and to the school leaders. Will that include your teachers, getting feedback from them, which I think is most important? Okay, so we'll do that, thank you. Um, remember the curriculum policy where the public has the right to review, so we need to put that in there in that timeline. Okay, great, scope and sequence.
Was that managed here?
Where, where is that?
I know you said it, I just don't.
Yeah, I just didn't see it.
If you were looking at step two, it talks about, um, the team or give the content to ensure that it's aligned. And then after that, it will be shared with parent and community and for the medical reading, so that's going to parent.
Okay, I, I didn't understand that, I apologize. But I'm a little concerned, we've had so many new teachers come in. If we wait until May or June to order this, do we have the, uh, resources in our hands to do professional development for our teachers? And will that impact going into the school? If we wait until August to get the warehouse to deliver the books? That's just one of my concerns. Thank you.
Any other, yes?
Good evening, Michelle Thompson, I'm a parent. Uh, thank you for creating this, forgive me the opportunity to talk first of all, and thank you for creating this timeline. I think it's very good. I think the, the. I think the, the information in here is exactly what it needs to be. My concern is a little bit different, it's a version of what Ms. Crutzer said. This timeline works if everyone agrees and if we like the material. My question and concern is, what if we don't? We don't have, if any person in this group, parents, teachers, your academic team, if they don't, one group in this doesn't like it, what happens? Because then we're out of time. So my request and suggestion would be maybe to bump this up a few months to start reviewing these issues prior to March and give everyone time and space to really review it. And if there were changes or concerns, to be able to pivot from there. Wanted to propose that, see what y'all thought about that.
The timeline is basically coming from the previous year, this is from parent, I mean, from school, from the excellent, but prior to that, if we know of a new curriculum, we most definitely can go and get before that. But that timeline speaks specifically to, once we finish that survey out, if schools come to us about something they were like there, that is really, but if we know something or if they share something before that, we don't have time to go and get well.
Okay, so this is just if it happens at the last minute, this is the timeline we're going to implement, but this isn't the timeline we're going to follow every time. Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Um, can I ask you a question? Are there any subjects that we teach in our schools that don't come from, I'm not choosing this right. So the state has the curriculums that we're allowed to choose from, are there any subjects that we can deviate from that, or do they all have to come from the state approved curriculums?
They should come from state. It's kind of ours to me.
Yeah.
And so when we go, we will go off, we will try to come from state.
I think, uh, the reason I ask is because I think that the general community does not understand that we don't, we can't go look at like a list of 100 curriculums and be like, ooh, this one works really well in Pennsylvania. Right, so.
One of the times we did, you know, I, I've been in education long enough to, uh, remember when we would bring the various vendors and the kids into one big room and everybody could come by and do kind of like a carousel and look to see what everybody has to offer. But the state kind of streamlined that and they give us the list of those options that we have and, you know, you do often get tier one funding, they provide, it kind of, I think we ended with.
And I think, again, that's an important education moment for our public who are here, um, and, and you who may be able to fill me in later on, if that's a good thing for us or not. I mean, obviously we want the tier one funding, um, but like maybe that's not a great thing for the state to impose on districts to lock into just certain, um, uh, curriculum. So just kind of want, you don't have to comment on that right now, because, um, I don't think you're in a position to. But, um, I, I just think that's just important for, for public to know that we don't have a vast choice. There's this, what's state approved for that? So just kind of wanted to add that in there. Thank you for explaining that. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on. Thank you, I appreciate you putting all this together, this is fabulous. Uh, we're going to move on to the next item, which is instructional minutes and scheduling. And I believe this question came up because of one school that I know of in particular that had limited recess to 15 minutes a day. And, um, my understanding is, uh, it was for high dose tutoring and some other, um, I don't know, let you speak, if you all know.
Their particular, I did not, it came about two things, the recess, um, issue and, uh, pre-K, um, starting schedule, starting date of schools, so Ms. McCardy will speak to it.
So the, um, the recess issue at one of the schools, when, um, I was issued the guidance for elementary schools' minutes, instructional minutes for the day, that came from the state. Um, I pushed out that document to the principals and then said, you know, I need a master schedule showing that you're following these guidelines for K through two and these guidelines for three through five.
Does that change this year, do they, we get changes this year?
Not of, not that I'm aware of, except that this was specifically spoken about at teacher leader summit, that we really need as administrators and leaders, we need to protect that core time because we're putting kids in intervention, but if you haven't first taught them a curriculum, then why are you doing intervention? You've got to teach the curriculum, the core time. So I pushed that out to the principals and they sent back their schedules to me and I just revised. And I, um, I looked at them and I called them if there was a revision that needed to be made. Um, for example, the things I looked for, uh, for three through five, and that's what I'll speak to, because I think that was one of the, the school question, um, that they had the 90 minutes core for literacy plus a 30 minute extension for literacy. Uh, they had a 60 minute core for math plus a 30 minute extension for math, a 45 minute time for, uh, science and 45 minute time for social studies. All of that together is 300 minutes. There's 420 minutes, um, in our school days, so that leaves recess, lunch, ancillary. And what, I think what happened, and, um, Ms. Emmanata might attest to this, but, um, with a departmentalized school, and when I say departmentalized, that means that, um, teacher teaches the same subject to a different group of kids multiple times during the day. So when, when you set those type of block schedules, you have to have core classes that are the same amount of block. Otherwise you'll be switching classes at 90 minutes and then at 60 minutes, that's not going to work, because then you've still got 30 minutes and these kids are still in class. So they have to be on even block schedules, 90 minute blocks is how, uh, Ms. Emmanata has that set up. And to do that, um, and create core time that's within the guidelines and her, um, extension times, her H G T times, then that required her to reduce the recess from 30 to 15. And there's nothing that I have found in any legislator, legislation or, uh, B S E or any guidance that says they have to have a 30 minute recess. I think it's 15, based on what I've read.
Do you want to talk about anything that has changed this?
No, she probably really doesn't. But, um, and I will say that, you know, I called Ms. Emmanata back, um, after, you know, I heard that there were some people, um, not happy with it or not understanding the, the change. Um, and I asked her, how, how are things going? What is your, what is your feedback from what you're getting from what's happening in the school building? Good evening, um, when we're given something as educators, um, that is mandated, um, we're not, educators are not one to sit down and just say, okay, we'll do that. We try to be creative, we try to think outside the box and we try to make the best out of whatever situation is that we're given. And so, uh, with this 45 minute lunch and recess, um, block of time, I met with my leadership team and I met with my teachers. And I said, what can we do to make this the best we can for kids? Because that's what it's all about. And so, um, the teachers got really creative, we created a lunch schedule where we have teachers that are actively monitoring. Um, we are bringing in roughly about 140 kids for each grade level. I mean, we're almost at, you know, we're at about 578 kids, the last one by the count. Um, and so a lot of, a lot of children to get, you know, around the building. Um, and the way we have it is when the kids start coming in the cafeteria, um, the kids come in, they eat, and within 15 to 20 minutes, they're already up and heading out to the playground. So we've been monitoring it very closely, getting feedback from the teachers. And, um, on most days, unless we have just kind of a little bit of a lag in the cafeteria, the kids are in either that cafeteria between 20 and 25 minutes and out on the playground. So they're averaging about 20 to 25 minutes on the playground, because the teachers are really doing a great job in the cafeteria of monitoring, getting the kids in, they're eating and they're getting out on the playground. So, um, it sounds like a 15 minute recess, but really it's a 45 minute block and we're making the most of that. And the kids are quickly letting us know, hey, we can get in our cafeteria and eat and get out, hang out with our friends and get to the playground. So that's kind of what we've done to kind of be creative with the amount of time that we have and what, what all we have to get done within the school.
And as someone who has done lunch monitoring in your cafeteria for that age group, getting them in and out there quickly is good, because they get loud. And, yeah, it takes a lot of time.
Well, it has to be a well-oiled machine, our, our staff does a great job.
Thank you, Ms. Emmanata. Okay, um, any?
And I was just going to say that, you know, um, Ms. Emmanata's school was not the only school, they had to make revisions on their master schedules. Um, one of the things that we noticed was that, um, you know, science and social studies, it's 45 minutes for the upper grades and 30 minutes each for the lower grades. And so, I mean, there's lots of principals in there tonight, and you can raise your hand if you've got a compliment saying, hey, we got to work on this, work on this. Now, I know, I know the sound was all along, but yeah, I mean, so that, that was a way that I tried to support them. I'm not trying to be, uh, bossy or I know it all or whatever, but if you don't provide the core and the time the kids need to learn the material, then you're not preparing the kids to be ready when they have to take those tests.
Thank you. And I know, I mean, some people, obviously I work and help the community coalitions, work with L S U Ag, and we, we always talk about the importance of physical activity and movement, we've got obesity problems in our state, and so it, it's tough though, because you're balancing some of that time. But I do know one of the questions that I had was for those extra, um, so I, I noticed on this, um, Ms. McCarty, it said, uh, so extension learning time, does every student need extension learning, or are they all put in that because it?
That's the Ms. Robinson, Dr. Robinson question.
Okay.
It's my job just to make sure it's built in the curriculum.
Oh, I agree.
One other thing that.
Can we get, can we get an answer to that question?
I was going to break it in.
She was going to do it, but she kind of went ahead of this.
Okay. Okay, yes, I'm getting, Ms. Knox, yes, please. Yeah, so, did, did you hear the question? Uh, so I noticed that there were some, uh, one of the questions I had was that there are some extension times on this. And so for the students who don't, tests show, don't, I just say it the way I said, does every student need to be in this extension line?
So 30 minutes, they'll daily requires H G T to be embedded in the K five master schedules, 30 minutes. If a student does not require H G T, they are still in interventions. A lot of people think interventions are only for students who are below grade levels. Interventions not only are for students below grade level, it's also to push and accelerate the learning for students who are at or above grade level. So at that 30 minute block in a typical classroom, you will see multiple groups. While one group may be working on skills that they have deficits in, another group of your high functioning or your gift the keys or your on grade level keys, they are giving an additional activity to extend what they're currently learning in the classroom to increase and further accelerate their learning.
Okay, so we're going to come back to that, because I know there's more questions about that, but the short answer is, yes, they are all, our interpretation of that is that they're all, every student in our district, is it just up to five or six?
Uh, I can only speak for K five.
Okay, has to be in this extra 30 minutes for each, for each of us. Okay, alright, we'll, we'll come back.
I was going to see if they could opt out if they were, you know, above mastery.
We'll get, we'll, we'll get on there. We're going to, that's another agenda item, so what, we're going to get back to those questions on that and hear all the murmurs about that, so we'll, uh, we'll, we'll get back to that one, okay? So you, back to work.
The other thing we want to suggest, which we didn't get the question, um, which is also in the beginning, was the pre-K, um, started to see.
Yes, yes.
And so, um, Ms. McCarty, I do want to say before she speaks, that our charge from our superintendent was that beginning of school, get the kids in school as quickly as possible. Um, we all know we have instructional minutes that we have to adhere to from the state and the director was, get your kids in school as soon as possible. And so she will speak to the pre-K question.
And that's on Ms. Anderson, I'd be glad to answer this question, because, um, last year at this time, that's what I was doing. And, um, when, uh, when, when the district came down and said to the principals, I think it was in May, um, that, um, pre-K was going to be starting, should they send out this back to school start, uh, dates and what the expectation of the district was. Um, I had concerns, my teachers had concerns, my parents had concerns, and I brought those concerns to Ms. Anderson and, you know, told her, for our situation in our school, we have 600 roughly, 570 I think now, um, kids, 100 of those are pre-K, and there's about 80 kindergartners that had never been to school. So about 180 kids that have never been to a campus, as well as their parents. And so, um, my concern with the pre-K starting on the same day as everyone else was trying to make that, manage that and allow those parents time to speak to the teacher, have some one-on-one time with them, um, also allow the teachers time to talk to the kids. And then in the past, we did some testing with the kids, which they told us that we weren't going to need to do that because the state and the, the district had tests aligned up to give, um, to do. And that those would have to be done once school started. Um, and so, when I went to her, she did bend, I mean, not immediately, she had, she had to talk and do it in her decision, it was the team's decision, she talked to Mr. Moore, but she did come back and bend and say, yes, we will give you an extra day because of the number of students you have and, um, you know, it's not just 20, 20 children, 20 pre-K children. Um, and so, while I know that it was a very hard decision for teachers, because I think teachers probably struggled with it the most, um, I think for some parents, they liked it because they, that was one less three days, four days that they were having to do child, childcare. Um, so I think you kind of have to weigh, you know, what, what can work and what, what can, but what's feasible, but what also is at the best benefit of the children. So, um, that was kind of where that decision came from.
Do you feel like, uh, it worked well, like this is what we're going to do next year too, is it?
Well, I wasn't there in August. You know, I wasn't there when school started this year. Yes.
I mean, but I, I'm assuming you got feedback from folks.
Well, we, yeah, we've talked about that, that we will, that's definitely something that we, we want to, you know, no one has called me and said anything, but, um, you know, on a one-on-one basis, but, um, I know when we get ready to start planning those times for those, for that time of the year, that that's something we will ask how it went and, um, go from there.
Okay. So, and for those of you here, now may be a good time to share, um, if, if you have concerns about that or experiences, um, challenges that arose from that, uh, because that decision-making won't be happening for next year too, based on, I mean, no, no news means you're going to go forward and do the same thing, I would assume, right? Yeah. Uh, so anybody have any questions or comments from this?
About waiting for Mr. Moore being to get students in schools and that's what we're going to work to do. However, I need it clearly understood that we are not beyond listening. If principals come to us and they talk to us about experiences they may have had this year, then we will listen and make adjustments as needed. So I, I hate to say that just because you did something one way this time, it's not necessarily be that way. We are open for discussion, so I just want to put that out there.
And I think that's an important point to remember, because I do have parents who will reach out to me and I'll ask, did you go talk to your principal first? Oh, no, I'll go do that. And so that's, that's really important, that that, that's the first line. The first line is teacher, really. Um, principal though, if it's, it's something programmatic like that, because, um, then that way the principal knows, first of all, because there's, I mean, different schools are different populations. There's a lot of kids that they're trying to keep track of what's going on. There's a lot of kids that they're trying to keep track of what's going on too. So making sure that they're communicating with principals because that's who you're going to be communicating with to find out what works, what difference, how do we make changes or not.
And I think it's also important to note that Lexington is a little outside of the norm. They have a hundred pre-K students, five players. We have a lot of schools that only have one pre-K player. So when we talk about extending the start of school, three, four days, and you've only got twenty pre-K kids, then why? So there, you know, there are a lot of things that we're looking at when we make those decisions because they are outside of the norm with the number of pre-Ks that they're getting.
All right, questions, concerns, come on up.
Michelle Thompson again. I am a parent of a preschooler. And I'm also a parent of a second grader. So I got to see how it worked on, how it used to work, where the pre-kers rolled in later that week. And then I.
Can you come closer to the mic? People are having a hard time hearing.
Then I firsthand experienced the change this year. And as you said, you're open to listening and I appreciate that. Thank you so much for giving us that opportunity because Lexington is not the norm. It's not. We are outside of the box. So I would ask if you could consider the scheduling as it applies to every school. Maybe one size does not fit everyone. One role may not fit for everyone. And from experience, what happened this year is we had almost six hundred kids starting in a school on the same day. And these pre-kers, these four-year-olds, it was incredibly chaotic. It was traumatic. It was traumatic for the parents. It was, it was a problem, isn't it?
We didn't have the microphone. Sorry, there's people online.
The fact that all students came, that was Principal McCarty sort of took more to have it from the niggas talk through and meet the teachers. So I just want to make that note that the district did not have all students to come. Pre-K, pre-K is only supposed to be the only group that creates.
So I'll speak to that. Thank you. Yes, and that was the original plan. I have the email. Y'all attach it to the agenda. Phenomenal. So what I heard Ms. McCarty say was that the original proposal with pre-K coming the first day didn't work for the schools. And y'all allowed them to pivot and let use that first day as a pre-K as really all classes meet and greet because no one had met the teachers yet. So that was great. You pivoted from the initial input. But when the directive came from you, from Mr. Superintendent of getting all kids in school as ASAP, you said ASAP, as soon as possible. Pre-K is not required by the state. It is not mandatory. Kindergarten now is. That's a different issue. But it applies the same because it's still their first time in school for a lot of these kids. So my concern would be, could we go back to the way we've done it in the past few years where the pre-kers, who is not required to be in school. So we're not talking about a school day and hour mandatory. We're talking about these toddlers, they're in full toddler clothing, coming in at the end of the week in staggered succession. That way they get to know the teachers, they get to know their school. And the teachers and the administrators aren't faced with almost six hundred kids on a Tuesday and over, I think I heard a hundred and eighty of them have never been there before. It didn't work. It didn't work from a parent perspective. In my appreciation from a teacher's and administrative perspective, it was chaotic and traumatic. My own daughter had problems with it. And so I would ask, since if you don't hear anything, you don't know. Now you know, would you consider allowing us to go back to the role in for the, the latter in the week for the pre-kers and kindergartners? Thank you, thank you. Can I address the other issues that they've spoken to on this agenda item that haven't been opened up for questions or should I have some?
Yeah, anything on this agenda item that we addressed, you know, we'll get into the, next, we'll get into the high dosage tutoring. We'll discuss that next.
Okay, so for scheduling, for scheduling and for the guidance in scheduling, that was one of the questions that was submitted prior. Now, I heard Ms. McCarty saying that she sent down the state guidance to the principals and they had to create the master schedule and that's where the problems came in. My question to the administration would be, what is guidance? Guidance from the LDOE, which I have, which I posted on the agenda, is these are the recommendations that the Louisiana Department of Education has given to the districts to help them create their scheduling. It's not mandatory. So why are we treating it as it is? Or is there a leeway there? That's my question because it appears that there may be mandates that the guidance is based on. And maybe that doesn't work. Okay.
So the state statute, and I've got it here. I'll come to the microphone. So the Louisiana statute is RS seventeen colon one five four dot one. And it says that all, the minimum school day for grades one through twelve in every public school in the state shall consist of three hundred and sixty minutes of instructional time. So that's, then the state comes up with a recommendation and we follow that recommendation. So that's, thank you, yes. And that is what the state law says because I pulled that off set. So my question is, we have the opportunity, the state comes up with a recommendation and we follow that recommendation. That's my exact question. Why are we following that recommendation?
Because the recommendation's different from a mandate.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Because what we're seeing is historically in, for instance, this is my own experience, is Lexington. We have where they teach science and social studies in two-week blocks. You do not take science and social studies every day. Ms. McCarty, you know that. But why are they supposed to? This is recommendations. This is not a mandate. This is a recommendation. Schools in this parish are still doing it to where you can do a whole hour of science for two weeks, a whole hour of social studies for the next two weeks. I've underlined it from your own agenda. These are recommendations. They are not mandates. The teachers do not have the time to teach the curriculum for these children to understand it and accept it and internalize it and perform in thirty minutes. So why can't we do what's been working where they have the one hour? Because it's not a mandate. It's a recommendation. Why are we changing what works when we don't have to?
We follow the guidance of state because it's good practice. And I mean, what this is, so you wouldn't have it that schools would just take that block and teach content or subject at will. I was wrong. They would want the teacher to go after the state.
What I would, yes.
Will you come sit here if you would prefer?
To have them teach at will whatever they would want? No, because that's not realistic. But what is realistic is what Kate Bromley, as the superintendent of education, put out as a.
Okay, I mean, I'm sorry. All the side conversations make it difficult for people online to hear. So if you need to have a conversation, you can step out.
Is let the teachers teach. Give them autonomy in scheduling, autonomy in planning and autonomy in implementation. And so this is a recommendation. It's not a mandate. And so if Kate Bromley, our superintendent, has required as a mandate to give the teachers autonomy, why are we taking that away? Why are we making in one class it's all for everybody?
Okay, Ms. Thompson, I'm going to, I'm just going to stop because we're running late on time. But I do want to give you an opportunity to respond. So I heard you say best practices. Do you, do we know what those? I'm wondering if we can get some information about why those are best practices and how that translates to, I mean, academic achievement. Are we expecting to see improvement in scores? Are we expecting, I mean, is funding tied to implementing these, those kinds of things? I'm not expecting to have these answers right now. I'm just saying perhaps we can assemble some of that information and answer these questions.
And if there's scheduling flexibility, schools might have the opportunity before the next school year to get together with administration via the teachers and principals and say, hey, let's reimagine how we're doing this for this particular school. Let's talk about the significance of this timing and what makes sense.
And in this case, like you acknowledged for Lexington, perhaps Lexington gets together with a committee with the principal and they make that request to come to you as a whole rather than go back and forth here. That might, would that be acceptable?
That would be boring.
Okay, all right.
Thank you for being open to that.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? And we are because time is ticking. Any future comments, we're going to limit to three minutes, which is what we usually do in board meetings. We don't necessarily do it in committee meetings, but this is a heavy, heavy agenda in this current conference. Okay, thank you all. Okay, so we're going to move on to high dosage tutoring, RTI. Remind me what RTI stands for?
Thank you.
All right, good afternoon. I am Dr. Robinson. I support K two, curriculum instruction and thirty-six science and HDT. I'm the person. All right, so to give a brief overview, HDT is a research-based instructional model that addresses unfinished learning. HDT is required by LDOE with approved at seven seven one. Fortunately, this is not a new concept. Elementary schools were already providing interventions in their daily schedule. HDT simply provided specific criteria that ensured the one-on-one time was purposeful and meaningful. LDOE has outlined specific program and tutoring requirements that must be met in order for the district and schools to be in compliance. Some of those requirements include all K through fifth grade students who do not score at or above grade level on their assessments. They are required to receive HDT tutoring. HDT tutoring has to occur for thirty minutes. It has to be embedded in the school's master schedule and we have to use LDOE-approved instructional materials. Fortunately, the district was already using Lexia and Zern. So when this mandate was pushed down last year, the pivot to HDT was not as cumbersome because we were already familiar with Lexia and Zern. HDT requires all students to receive interventions until they are proficient. Proficient meaning they score at or above grade level.
So you said they're required if they're at or below, but not required if they're at or.
Okay, in simple terms, fourth and fifth grade students, if they score basic, approaching basic or unsaid, they have to have HDT tutoring. And that's for ELA and or M.A.
But above that, they don't.
Above it, they absolutely do not. You are correct. This is our second year for HDT high dosage tutoring. Within the first year of its implementation and with us following the direct guidance from LDOE, all twelve elementary schools showed an increase in percentage of students who scored at or above benchmark, which led to the district seeing an eleven percent increase in their student score at or above grade level. Very happy that that was a lot of hard work from the school leaders, the teachers. Like we, we didn't like it, but we did what we had to do and we saw the growth. Not only did K through third grade students experience growth, our third through eighth grade students received a three percent increase in master on the league assessment. So we saw growth district-wide.
Again, part of the top state.
Yes, you saw that. I bet you saw it. Okay. Moving until this school year, even with the summer slump, and we know a lot of times our kids are not as engaged in the summertime with academics, we saw a five percent increase from last year's BOY beginning of the year string. So although summer has passed, our students came back and still show growth. That percentage, if you're interested. Fifty-six to sixty-one percent. Fifty-six percent beginning of the year two thousand twenty-four, beginning of the year two thousand twenty-five, we are at sixty-one percent of our K through third grade students scoring at or above. All right, addressing one question that you shared with Ms. Anderson. Thankfully, all our students do not require HDT tutoring. So when classroom teachers, classroom teachers are providing HDT tutoring. So when they are providing the tutoring, other students are still in the classroom. So that time for those students who do not require HDT, that's when they're getting that extended learning, that accelerated learning to continue to show, so that they can continue to show growth.
So are they doing that themselves?
The students. Teachers have the autonomy to pull material, LDOE-approved material, and/or use instruction that they are currently working on in the classroom, modify it to add some kind of challenge to it. And the students are given that a time and they're asked to continue to work.
Unless you have two teachers in the class.
And fortunately, that is not.
I get it. I mean, I just, I mean, it could be extra recess time.
I mean, it could be extra recess, but again, who's monitoring the students? If the teachers are providing the HDT, who's monitoring the students? Moving on to Lexia, some of your questions dealt with Lexia and Zern, and I'm going to wrap up after this. Lexia, before HDT was a requirement, Lexia was already a district initiative. Ms. Anderson brought Lexia to the district. So when the mandate came down for HDT tutoring, it was a simple transition for us. We just continued to do what we were doing. Students, our goal for the district is for students to obtain their weekly units. One unit typically takes five minutes for a student to complete. The units vary depending on the student. If the student places close to their grade level, that reduces the number of units they need to complete. The further they are away from their grade level, the more units they have to complete. How does the placement occur? At the beginning of each school year, students are given a quick assessment in Lexia and based on their performance, the computer figures out where this student, where the deficit is, and that's where the instruction starts in that program. I can only speak for K five.
Appreciate you clarifying.
Yes, ma'am. For Zern, Zern is a state requirement following the guidance for LDOE. It's also an approved resource for HD two, HDT. So the district's guidance has been for students to simply complete three lessons a week. Zern, in a quick summary, it reinforces whatever mathematical concepts or skills that the students are working on in class. So if a student, if a teacher is providing instructional fractions, the student will hop onto the Zern platform and they are provided with remediation and/or re-taught that same fraction lesson. So they're getting the same information, again, to ensure that they have that solid foundation to do well later in the school year.
Mr. Moore, if you increase the recess time for those people achieving, you're going to have great competition to raise their scores to within and get their interest in recess. Now, I'm serious. What gets measured gets done and that's a good motivator.
Okay, anyone have questions, comments? Okay, we've got a few on that.
Good evening everyone. Good evening, evening. I'm speaking not as an administrator in Monroe City. My name is Cassandra Shelley. I'm speaking as a sixth-grade teacher from Ross Shelling Elementary who actually experienced Zern issues. And I will wholeheartedly tell you, board members and people assembled, there are some children in some buildings who are not at the, unfortunately. And I'm sure all of us, regardless of what town, part of town we live on and what our other persuasions are. and what our other persuasions are, we want all children to attend. And with that said, we saw that at LaShelly. I haven't been in a classroom with a bunch of sixth graders since 1991 at J.S. Clark Medical. So I had to get my feet wet with Zern. And I had to learn Zern before my baby was born. We had a nine, excuse me, that's for me, we had a nine-point growth at LaShelly, who has been an F school for many years. I'm hearing from the new principal that they are predicted to be AD. AD for our babies is growth. For those of you who do not know, the state has started a new mandate, and it's come out all time to the day and night with this, with LDOE. And it's called Growth to Mastery, where children will not just be basic anymore. And for those of us who are saying our children are mastery, they're going to, they're going to look, those children will be advanced. There's no limit on what children will have to do. I know, and it's kind of troubling, but that's the way it is. So with that said, back to my Lexia. My children grew not just because of what I could give them, but because I was using Lexia and Zern, especially Zern in mathematics, to push them, to challenge them, to help reteach, to revisit, and then sometimes to accelerate. Because my two children, who were identified as gifted last year at sixth grade, although they had been in that building many years, because they had never been identified, and they were identified as sixth graders to be tested for gifted, and they made it. I had to do some creative things with Zern for them. So I set their level, I set their level to seventh and eighth grade Zern, and they did meet the goal. So please don't throw the baby out with the bad water. Yes, I agree. Every school does not fit every situation. But there are some schools who are in desperate need of other things, and that particular school was. So please be patient with us. We're not giving shit. Thank you so much.
My name's Heather Grant, and I agree with you that all of the schools are not the same, but neither are the students. And with that being said, the overall, the blanketed intervention of Lexia and Zern, I disagree with. Have I heard great things about Zern? Yes. Lexia is, my daughter, for example, is reading whatever a 13th grade level is, but she's telling me that they're literally just pushing the buttons on the computer to get through Lexia because it's mandatory, and they have to do it. And she's not learning anything from it. And so that's my first question is, why every student has to do the Lexia? Because that's what we've been told. And also, the, this kind of goes back to the reduced recess and the reduced lunch, is we're being told we have to do an hour of high-dose tutoring. We go to school and we do 30 minutes in the morning, and then we do 30 minutes in the afternoon. So whatever day you're, whatever program you're doing that day, if it's Lexia Day, they have, say, Monday, Wednesday, Friday is Lexia, Tuesday, Wednesday is Zern, we're getting an hour of Lexia, 30 minutes in the morning, 30 minutes in the afternoon. And again, it's, I just, I don't agree with the blanketed intervention with the kids. And I think that's what a lot of people over here are having issues with. So if y'all could just address that.
What, can you say what grade your students?
Um, yeah, but this is, from what I've kind of been told, pretty much the whole school.
So it's an elementary?
Yeah, that's how we know. Yes. So we're having an hour of computer-based learning instead of direct teaching from our teachers that we're paying for. That's my concern. Thank you.
I can clarify some of that. Lexia and Zern are not the only approved LDOE resources. However, some of our teachers gravitate toward those resources. They have at least three to four other resources that they can pull from that are not online, they are not computer-based. They can use M-Class, it's a platform of other resources. As it relates to the hour of HDT. By law, if a student requires HDT for literacy, that's all they are required to receive. If they require HDT for numeracy, that's all they are required to receive. If they require both, that's the only way they should be getting an hour. I cannot speak to your school side because I don't know, I didn't work the master schedule, but the guidance has been clearly, if a student only needs that 30 minutes for literacy or 30 minutes for numeracy, that's all by law they are required to receive.
So I wanted to ask a question because I have, I have a eighth grader. And, and I know this is not your department, so this is not your question. But, but it does still apply. So how are we assessing the applicability of a content for that student's academic prowess, for lack of a better word? So if you have a student who is, is down here, like, are we making sure they're getting the content that they need for their at, below, whatever mastery? And then if you've got this, this child who's reading at 13th grade level, I mean, we probably, I would imagine they've clucked out of that program at that point. So how are we assessing that, ensuring that these students aren't wasting their time on something that's, you know, you know, if you're, you're a kid who's in AP class, for instance, and saying, oh, what, you know, what punctuation you put at the end of a question? Like, we, we don't need to be doing that. We don't need to be wasting these students' time. I mean, I hate to say wasting time because no learning is wasting time, but if you're, if you're being tested on things that you already have a mastery of, then what are we even doing?
So I can say this. Teachers should be actively monitoring the program. I can only speak for K-5, specifically K-2. Wherever students fall on that Lexia platform is generally where they feel also we're dealing. So the data correlates. And for upper secondary, I think the program goes all the way to high school. It goes all the way to ninth grade. I can't speak on that, but.
So if you have a student, say, in eighth grade, and they're just not challenged by this, the teacher should be saying, okay, you, you clucked out, you're good, read a comic book.
Yes, but also remember too, this, the Lexia is addressing, it's addressing work study, which is vocabulary, which kids need more of. It's also addressing grammar, which kids need more of. They're not getting enough of that within the, the other parts of the curriculum. Some, some may be, but if they get to a form where they can, they can test out and they go to the next level of that, of a program.
Hold on, I can't, I can't hear his response. Please.
And so then it's up to the teacher then to see where they are and then to offer them other avenues besides Lexia.
Okay, so teachers have that autonomy that if a student is not challenged, I'm not sure my son is gonna be like, this is too easy, give me something harder. But if a student is not challenged by something, the teacher, yours.
But I'll also, but I'll also look to see if they have completely mastered all of the skills that are in that program for those three areas.
Right.
Because what we found in, in looking at the data that they're doing very well in comprehension because our ELA programs are offering a lot of comprehension, less of the grammar and the vocabulary, where we're seeing the deficits in Lexia or in those other two areas.
So question, if my child comes home and says, Mom, this is super easy, I shouldn't be doing this, I could reach out to a teacher and say, can you show me the scores?
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, maybe he is, maybe he's not.
And also see where they placed on the placement test at the beginning, because the lessons that they are assigned are based on where they placed at the placement test at the beginning of the year.
Yeah, right. And, and I, I've heard stories from, and I don't know, I've heard stories from multiple parents, and I know I've experienced that, that the, the testing, like, my son tests high, but what he's saying he's getting is down here. So that, that's the concern that I've heard from other parents too. I mean, she was there. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Ashley West, thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'm not gonna be as eloquent maybe as some of you, but I do think that it's important at this point, and I'm sorry, Mr. Moore's missing this, but I do think it's important for us to really understand why a lot of us are here. And I totally get that students who are below level need extra and that Lexia has been fantastic for them. And I am a big proponent of finding out exactly what we can do with HDT to bring those babies along. There is absolutely no child in our district that should be left behind. I do, well, let you see my eighth grader's Lexia lessons, and I don't care how he's testing or what he's not testing on. This is probably not the best use of his time. I think my fourth grader could probably do it. So I did look at the lessons. I'm not great with Lexia, and I, it's not my favorite thing, depending on what the child needs. But I think most of us in the room, I've started reading recently things that Betsy mandates and what our schedules are supposed to look like. It's convoluted and it's messy. And there may be some things we need to join forces on and go to the state and talk to them about. I read a state law, and I've got it printed over there, that says we're supposed to have 30 minutes of high activity every single day. We're talking 15 minutes recess and PE once a week. So we're not making that. That's in the law. And if Betsy's telling us, or LDOE, whatever, telling us that there are things that we can't do, and then we can't obey the law in some ways, and that's a problem as well, but HDT and RTI, I've kind of been a little bit confused on because my fourth grader has an hour of HDT every morning. So he's in a classroom where there are children that are qualified for it and have to have it three times a week for at least 10 weeks. That's the minimum. We've decided we're gonna do it all year for those kids, and it's great. But there's a one teacher for four children, so there are kids that are passed out lessons, and they're doing it on their own. He's nine. I just don't know how much that's bringing along his education. And I know that if we've provided for HDT tutors, I think we can hire those and we can seek funding for those. Maybe that's what we need to think about as well. I just think that we need to understand a little bit more and work together. What's required, what's suggested, what's gonna work best for our kids, who's scoring the below, and I think most of the parents in this room are just starting to really take an active role in their kids' education, and we all need to be partners. That's what I think everybody here wants. So too many questions and things to ask tonight, honestly, in this curriculum. But I think what you're gonna see is that a lot of people just want to help. Do we need to go to state? Do we need to say 120 minutes of ELA and 120 minutes of math a day are not necessary? Yeah, I just.
Thank you, Ashley West. I appreciate that. And that's coming from someone who's very involved in all Reed Learn to See programs through United Way and programming at United Way, so I appreciate your input on that. Ms. Fetterby? Oh, pardon me, sorry.
Good evening. And I, I guess, everybody in the room seems to want something, but we have such a diverse district. And so what may work well, yes, we understand. And I could never compare my candidates with what I see because she started with a different playing field. Now, we, I love Zern and I love Lexia, and I'll tell you why. A teacher can navigate it to work for any level of kid if they would just look at what's needed. Even the smartest kid will need some help. And so when we decide on programs, we have to look at a whole district. We cannot look at, is my child, is your child, is everybody trusting us with their kids? And so, yes, we should come to a medium of what works, but we should not exclude because it doesn't work for my kid. And I've been in education long enough. I taught 30 years at Navell. And then on the back end, I'm in, as a principal. But what comes through that door is not always what we think. So we have to be the leaders to look out for every kid, not my kid, but every kid. Right now, Zern, we meet with a rep every other Wednesday. I asked her to give me evidence that Zern is working. Leave scores, it is tied in. If you work that Zern the right way, all the scores are moving. Yes, many roughen, whether at school, D-school now, growth. But sometimes maybe we don't let things stay in place long enough to see how it's gonna work. We move from this to that to this. But do we ever really look at the diversity of kids that's coming in? We are not fortunate to have the gifted kids. My kid, my daughter was in gifted. But I'm saying to you, the, the playground has changed. If anything, we need to find the parents and help them help out. So we, we, that's all I'll say. Just remember, we're all working with a diverse population, and some of this may be good, some of that may be good. But like she said, work together, but please, don't categorize. Because every kid deserves a fair shake, and that's the obligation we have. We're seeing more autism in schools. I appreciate it. Thank you.
No, it is. Thank you for that. And I wanna, I wanna add, and just to remind you of what we've heard tonight, because we, we know these programs are useful and valuable, but what, what I've heard tonight was, if it's not required, the teacher has autonomy on what to do with the students that it's not required. Is that, did I hear that wrong? Okay, so there's autonomy. Yeah, for all grades, so I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, K through sec, K through, I'm sorry, ninth, if they're above, what's the word? Math, math. If they're at mastery above, yeah, above proficient, then the teacher has the autonomy discretion, thank you, to determine what that student's doing either within the program or using another program. Correct? Correct me if I'm saying it wrong. Okay, okay, thank you. So, and also, go talk to your teachers, go talk to your principals. If your kid, my kid's coming home saying, this is easy. And I'm like, well, you can ask for harder. He's like, no, I'm good. So I mean, it's your, you, you need to put, you know, what you need to do for your students. Okay, please, Ms. Thompson, three minutes.
Chip person, hang on. Thank you for making that clear because I wanna make sure we're all understanding the, the same thing. I think HDT is great. I think Lexia and Zern are great. My kid loves it. He thinks it's the best thing in the world. But I wanna make sure that what y'all are saying, we can actually implement at the schools. When we have autonomy to choose the three or four other items that you said, that the kids who do not need, who do not qualify for HDT can use those three or four other items, they can. When? When? My, my, my question is, when during the day can they use it? Because it is my understanding, is it correct that the schools have a mandate where they must have a 90% participation rate for Lexia and Zern? That's a goal or a mandate? So the school did, the schools will not be penalized if they do not meet a 90% participation rate? Okay, so I wanna make sure we all can understand because I know the principals and vice principals are in the room.
Okay, so I need you to, I need you to quiet down after.
Principals and vice principals that are in the room, and principals are watching these, and this is being recorded. The schools can abandon Lexia and Zern contrary to the 90% participation goal and not be penalized? No, the ones who do not qualify for it. Y'all are okay with that? Y'all are telling us we can do it? And they do not, the schools do not have to meet the 90% participation rate? Okay, thank you. Alright.
Thank you. Alright, one more question or comment. We need to keep, we need to move on. Ms. Fetterby?
Thank you, Ms. Hangon. Thank you for, thank you for giving us the opportunity to address.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to address this. And we appreciate the information. But I want to speak from the state level. Ms. Bryant and I had a test to be captured from last year. We have options. Surely, we have tier one. But as our former superintendent told us and we learned, if you don't buy the tier one, they don't help you fund it. And that's the issue. It is an issue we need to go to state and address. But you can buy tier two or tier three. When you're talking about Zern, that's what we got after we had the first program. You know, what is that wonderful math program that we have? Eureka. That, it wasn't good enough. So we went to Eureka Square. That wasn't good enough. So now we have Zern and we're paying for it. I know we still do. We still use Eureka Square. We're doing all of it. We're paying for all of it. Not Zern, but the math, the math programs. But if we do need to have an option for all the students, and we want every student to succeed, even the students that are at Sherwood. We want them to succeed. If you've got to have thirty minutes a day, and that's all it says up here, is thirty minutes a day, I don't know whether we get an hour. And we need, we need to get together and say, we want to look at a different program. It is there. And the way to do that is to ask for a waiver. Ms. Hangon, you can go to the district, Betsy, and you ask for a waiver and you do not have to do as these suggested. It is recommended. Ms. Thompson is right. It is only recommended.
But I think we've spoken to them, Ms. Crutcher, tonight. I mean, I think that's been asked and answered for that. There's not even a waiver necessary. And I would venture to say that if we start requesting waivers for a district that needs a lot of improvement, it's probably not a good political move for this district.
Well, then we should...
But they've already said those students do have the opportunity, you know, to not be going through the high juicery.
We just want to make sure. And maybe if you get a copy of all the leave scores, to see exactly how well everybody did, which is wonderful.
All right, thank you. All right, y'all, I know this is like marathon session. Y'all, I mean, I'm sure most of us have been working all day today and we all have. I apologize for that. We're going to try to get through this. How are you? One second. I know we've got a lot of people departing. Okay, hold on one second. I want to ask for a general consensus. If you'd be really upset about me tabling the rest of the items for another evening because this... Okay, all right, okay. That's what I was asking. Okay. You don't even be mad at me. I'm just asking a question. You don't get mad at my question.
Let's roll.
Okay, thank you. So we are, what are we on now?
Course choice.
Thank you.
Okay. Jeremy May Hall, secondary supervisor from Monroe City Schools, here to discuss with you tonight the revisions made to the course, uh, choice for plan, formerly known as SCA. This is just more for information for our committee and for all interested parties that there's been a revised policy. And so we are making those adjustments to that policy now. It is required that the school system, beginning this school year, to define clear responsibilities for the school system to promote transparency, accountability, and fair access to high-quality courses funded by the course choice program, formerly known as SCA, which was our supplemental course allocation, which is where we funded our dual enrollment. The system-level changes required are, number one, parental involvement in course approval. The schools must obtain written parental permission and ensure that the courses are aligned through the students' graduation pathways. Number two, increased transparency and outreach. Schools are required to actively inform parents and students about course choice opportunities, funding, and course options. Number three, funding and accountability. The schools must prioritize funding based on graduation requirements, tops aligned, and college credit courses, which is dual enrollment, fast-forward, and career pathways supporting for struggling schools, academic and career technical recovery, test preparation, and school system priorities approved by LDOE. What does parental involvement and outreach look like? Number one, we have to have access to planning resources, which we provide parents with information about LDOE planning resources to help them understand what the graduation requirements are and what is available in the course choice, uh, course requirements. Number two is consultation. The schools will consult with the students and parents in their course selection process. Number three is the written permission that I mentioned earlier, where the schools will obtain written permission from parents prior to enrollment. And number four, academic guidance, where schools will notify the parents if the course requested by the parent is determined to be academically inappropriate based on the student's graduation pathway or if it conflicts with state graduation planning resources. So to address all of that, we now have our course choice parental request form, which you have a copy of in your packet. So what a parent would do is they'll come into the school with their child, meet with the counselors, and they will discuss the course that they are requesting. There is a priority and a description for the course, and that is listed on the request form. If that request is then granted, then you have your second form, which is in your packet, which is the parental consent form, which will discuss all the things that's required for the students and the parents to fulfill if they intend to get that particular credit. The third page has to do with our new accountability. So in the secondary schools, we have three parts to accountability. We have achieve, grow, and thrive. Thrive is where we look at ACT scores, CLEP scores, AP scores, and dual enrollment. And this is a plan for how we're going to address all of those components so that we can then have what we need for the school performance scores and for district scores to improve. I'm sure you have some questions.
Uh, that was a lot. Okay. Okay, so my first question is, so this is effective spring of next year?
Yes. It doesn't for this school year. So what we did was, we've already funded all of the dual enrollment courses for this fall. And we will, in the spring then, the counselors will have to bring the students in so that they can sign this permission form. And they can do the request form so that we can make sure the course that they're getting in the spring is going to be aligned unless it's already connected to a course that they're taking this fall, such as the English four. That's a continuation. That's a full-year course. So it'd be any kind of new initial dual enrollment credit that they would be trying to ask for.
Okay, I understand.
So this is basically just a change in the name. We've been using the supplemental course allocation. It's now what we call course choice.
Okay, gotcha.
And it's requiring us to get parental permission. Whereas before, it's just been a phone call or it's been a visit with a parent and child saying that they want to do dual enrollment. It just puts a little bit more teeth into our dual enrollment AP and CLEP offerings.
Okay, so just immediately, one of the changes, I think, that I've noticed is that if a student does not pass the AP exam with at least a score of three, the parent are partying and will have to refund the district for the cost of the test. But we're only paying for one test.
Correct.
Their whole high school career.
Correct. Because that's what's required, because that's what's required for us to get the points for the thrive portion of accountability. Because in the past, what all it required was that the students sit for the test. We were paying for them to just sit and take the test. It didn't really matter whether they, what they scored on the test. Well, now it matters. And so it's going to make people really consider what courses they're going to take, whether they're going to do dual enrollment courses, whether they're going to do AP or try to get CLEP. Because what was happening was Monroe City Schools was funding AP, dual enrollment, and CLEP for students to get the exact same college credit.
Like in one course, you think? Ah, okay.
And so trying to be good stewards of our money and making sure that we, you know, do what is best for students. Do we have to look at, then, what are we going to do to make sure that they get what they need?
Why would they, why, why would, okay, I'm not going to ask that because that's just my ignorance. I'll have to look more into that. But...
Also, but also too, I would also like to say too, there has been some information that's gone out and has gotten back to me. It's been tremendously erroneous about us eliminating dual enrollment. It's, we're not eliminating at all. It's a change in the name from course choice, from supplemental course allocation to course choice. This is a change in the name of dual enrollment program that we're using. Also, if there is a situation like we had at Neville this fall where we lost our Latin teacher, we decided to go elsewhere. Through this plan, through this SCA portal, we were able to offer the students who had requested Latin one and Latin two the opportunity, Latin two, the opportunity to take that course and we pay for it through this plan.
Where students, are that where students may know where? I got, just because I know one student who took Latin, but he might have been...
We may have, because we only have Latin one and two. These are all the kids that were in Latin two.
Mr. Mayhall, do we still offer ASVAB or have we just...
Yes, we are going to be doing that because that's also a part of accountability. So the difference in that, but that's a constant thing. That's just a matter of setting up. That's a matter of the counselor's contact. The, the, unless you bring them in again, setting, setting that question up again.
Okay, I'm going to get to that in a second. One thing I do want to ask, so if a student wants to take more than what we pay for, is that in here that that's an option?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And so the parents, in that meeting, in that meeting, that's why I'm asking. So I'm looking at this, and I apologize. This is a... But is it, is it an option on this consent form that if you would like to take something beyond that, you may, but you have to pay for it?
Yes, it is in there. But to let that be is known that that's their responsibility. And then if the student then gets their AP credit or their CLEP credit, then we put that on, direct on their transcript with that grade.
Okay. So again, I think it's important to point out that it doesn't eliminate the option. What it eliminates is public funding paying for that.
And it's going to streamline how we're using our money to fund the things that we, to give our students opportunities that we want them to have. Because and then if it gets to the point where there is any money, that's why the request was filed up from Ms. Crutcher about the amount of the dual enrollment budget being smaller. And that is, this is why. Because we're streamlining that because it does, we don't, we only need them to have six hours of credit. But if parents are some clients pay, we're more than welcome to. We can, we can go from there as long as they, you know, give us the money. The issue too was with the money, was that students, there were a lot of students who were really not technically qualified to be dual enrollment students. If you're going to be a dual enrollment student, you are really considered a college student with all the rights and responsibilities of a college student. And I say responsibility, that means keeping up with your own grades. That means keeping up with your own assignments, not depending on someone else to do that. Unless it is a course being taught on the campus by a qualified teacher to teach dual enrollment. So there's two different avenues there. But to go back to that, we had students who were signing up for dual enrollment courses, taking AP tests, taking CLEP tests, not passing those tests, and we're not getting the money back for it.
So I do have one consideration that if we do have a student who is of lower income but is excelling at this and would like to take more but does not have the financial means to do that, then we create an avenue for them to get assistance. Because we don't want just the students who have parents with greater means to be the high achievers, right? But that's where we get at, that really addressing equity. So just creating that avenue for that option.
I also would like to mention that ACT testing, students have an opportunity to take ACT twelve times. Monroe City pays for it when they are juniors. They pay for it twice. They pay for it in the fall. They pay for it in the spring. Monroe City also pays for any senior who does not meet the threshold for accountability, which is going up to a twenty. And then there are some students who, if they want to and are not able to pay beyond those opportunities that Monroe City offers, we could get them fee waivers that will take care of additional administrations of that test. There was a question about the national merit. The national merit requires the SAT or pre-SAT. That is a matter of a student or a parent going to the school and asking the counselor or someone at that school for their child to be tested. And arrangements can be made for that child's test. And they have to sign up for it, just like they would if they were taking ACT. Though no one's ever been denied that.
I very much appreciate that. Ms. West?
I just have a couple of questions. Just, I'm just going to keep out the question. So if juniors and seniors are taking dual enrollment and they have to have a minimum ACT score to sign up for those, then they'll have to take the ACT on their own as freshmen or sophomores? Because obviously they'll have to meet the ACT requirement before their junior year.
Correct. But that's just a parent's prerogative. It's up to the parent to decide whether they want their child to take dual enrollment as a junior anyway. But y'all have to really have to know your child, whether you think your child is able to handle that and if they can, and how well they were doing that ACT. The ACT, y'all have to remember, the math portion of ACT, that child has already gone through almost the majority of ACT two because of the skills that are tested on that test. But if here, if so inclined, every child do that, they're more than welcome to do that.
So I mean, I'm just trying to figure out, as somebody with an incoming freshman next year, when do we have meetings with incoming freshmen about what your freshman, what you need to look like in high school?
Also, within our registration handbook, all this is listed in the registration handbook. Also, the district also pays for students to take the pre-ACT in the freshman and sophomore year, which is a, really is, kind of gives you an indication of how well they will perform on the real ACT. And so that's going to happen to freshmen and sophomores.
So we pay for that?
The district does.
No, that's not it.
A real ACT test is a freshman sophomore and we'll pay for it.
What's the difference in the cost?
ACT is sixty-nine bucks? Sixty-sixty-four dollars.
And what's the pre-ACT costing us?
It's not cost, the district, we get it because it's a big bulk. Because we test all of them in the district, all of our freshmen, all of our sophomores. So we don't, we get like a bulk for any.
So everybody takes the pre-ACT?
In pertaining to ACT testing, as far as studying, March to success is a great program. It's free. They use former ACT tests. Something I'd encourage all parents to look into, March to success.
I just have a, I just have a concern. There's a lot of rules about what's required. What parents are hearing ahead of time, so they just help? What do they do for the kids whose parents aren't capable of helping them? Do they get a lot of help from guidance counselors? Some kids are really going to want to be a part of this and their parents may be unable to help them.
So this, that was the purpose of putting all this in writing. But there's all been, and that's why the state has revised this policy. Because it was just kind of, you know, parents kind of take it as, oh, my child takes the ACT. Maybe they have a conversation with them, maybe they don't, maybe it's over. But this right here will assure you that as a parent, you can go, okay, see, you're going to do dual enrollment, you're going to do this, we're going to do that. I'm going to have to pay that money back if you don't get the grades you're supposed to get.
Ms. West, I would suggest that some of what you're asking falls on the principal's responsibility for those incoming freshman parents.
That's correct.
And that can, and that also sets meetings with the students to schedule...
And counselors, yes. Yeah, so and then again, remembering your principals are, and vice principals and counselors, particularly at high school levels, are extremely important to talk to about any concerns you have about your students.
Thank you so much. I'm Sarah Butler, and I have some questions about some changes that have been made at Neville regarding ACT, dual enrollment. And I have a question on the language. My daughter was scheduled to take Spanish three this year. She's a sophomore. And beginning of the school year, apparently there's no more Spanish three or four or five. We weren't told, we weren't given another opportunity like the Latin. We were told we could take it through BYU at our, you know, at our cost. And, you know, we had to stay in school for seven... And, you know, we had to stay in school for seven courses, and then she has to enter some software practice after, so it was not feasible to add on another class. So, that's one of my just concerns that I want to relate.
Can you pull down the microphone, say?
Is that, that, the answer to that is, is there's only two years of foreign language required.
Correct.
For, for years and years, we've had upper level, I mean, we're a public school, we should have upper level foreign language. I mean.
We should, we should have certified teachers too, but we don't. And so, that's not to be funny, I'm just telling, I'm just telling the truth. And in that different case, also because we get the practical courses, we have to have a certain number of students in a course or a course to make, that's the same at the, at the university level. You have, you don't have enough students to, for that class to make, then we have to make other alternatives.
Maybe you'll find out how many students.
But that's why we have, that's why we have this course choice now, where if those are, if those are courses, that's why we did what we did with the Latin two, but that was a, that was a larger group of people. Also, some of the decisions that are made are put on, or the opinion is the decisions are coming down from up top, that is not always the case. There are consultations, but there are consultations with the principals.
Okay, we're gonna let Ms., we're gonna let her continue her question.
Yes. So, I'm just gonna read off a list of changes that are made, I don't know who made them or where they were made, but in my opinion, these are things that could not only are negative for students, but they are gonna be harmful, probably to the school system. Because if we don't have these AP classes and dual enrollment opportunities, when our kids go to apply to good schools, who's gonna get in, or who's gonna get the scholarship? The kids that have AP classes and have passed the test. So at Neville, we have lost three, we have lost three AP classes this year.
Which one?
AP Physics, AP English Core, and AP Human Geography. Okay, sophomores are no longer allowed to take the ACT, even if they're taking Algebra two.
Not true.
Well, that's what we've been told.
Not true.
Okay, well then I'll find out that. No more dual enrollment for sophomores, I think we've discussed that there's no blanket policy for everybody, if you have, you know, a sophomore who has no GPA average and has taken the ACT and done well, why can't they take a dual enrollment class? No more AP for freshmen, if you go and look at the other schools around us and other districts.
I'm letting her finish her question since you're.
I'm, I'm, I know, I know it's late.
No, go ahead.
First, we can take AP, meeting certain requirements.
Correct.
We have an ACT class at Neville this year that has no materials, it has become a study hall because materials are backordered until November.
After the ACT, after the ACT.
After the ACT, it's in. She has a daughter in the class, so I mean, you can take that with her, yeah.
And Mr. Hanks is here.
Yeah, and that's fine, I don't know where these decisions are coming from, but I'm saying that these are all disappointing for me, for our students and for our system, because I think ultimately, parents who want the best for their children are gonna find a place that has these offerings that help their children excel.
Ms. Butler, when did you find out about the schedule of changes?
For Spanish? Well, when my daughter arrived at school and they, she was supposed to be Spanish three, and they put her in a Spanish one class, and she came home and said, I was put in a Spanish one class. And so that's when I contacted Mr. Hanks, and apparently he said there was no Spanish three or four anymore because the teacher had left, and, so.
And I think to your point, at least what I'm hearing you say, is that there, there's a point of teaching the required, and so do we want to be known for a district that is meeting requirements or exceeding them?
And we've been managing to produce great students who, who get, go to great colleges and get great scholarships. I mean, I have two children that are doing that, but I mean, I'm just saying this is headed in the wrong direction. And so for all of these parents that have younger children, I'm letting you know that this is what's happening, and I hope that it, it changes and gets back in force.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Hanks, did you want?
Yeah, I thought you were. Um, in regards to Spanish, all our Spanish teachers left. So, the Spanish teachers left in, one in May, one left in, never will know what time, but basically we got two new, brand new Spanish teachers. One of them is not currently certified in Spanish, the other one is coming from not teaching in two years, so we were giving them time to see, I wanted to have a stronger Spanish teacher before we offered anything else.
You told me that, I'm pretty sure that's.
In regards to AP Physics, we had two to three kids sign up for AP Physics. If we had offered AP Physics for those two or three students, our chemistry classes would have been thirty-five to forty kids. So, but the decision was made to not offer AP Physics, we haven't got rid of it, we got rid of it this year, that does not mean it's being cut, it just means that we're not offering it this year because we don't have enough interest in it. If we get more people interested in it, we'll be glad to offer it, we love that class. We have a teacher that's certified in it who was prepared to teach it, but when we didn't have enough, we had to say we're not doing it this year. AP Human Geography was also not cut. Last, Civics has now become a requirement for the state. Last year was the first year for that. Civics, there was no curriculum. We didn't want to have our kids take a state test without a curriculum, that's not fair to them, because we don't know what they're basing things on. So last year, we didn't offer Business, every kid took Jodoh.
To.
No, last year. Oh, I'm sorry. Last year, everyone took Jodoh. Those students that could take AP in the Jodoh, took AP in the Jodoh. This year, we moved to Civics, we gotta get those kids that were freshmen last year on the Civics, because they gotta take a state mandated test, believe me. So this year, we're not offering Jodoh to any of them, which is the way that we worked it out with the district, because I guess we'll turn the same page. We'll be offering Human Geography next year, so those students that want to take AP Human Geography next year, one hundred percent will be able to take all that.
But not English four?
English four, that's another misconception, I know, that's another misconception, we have not got rid of AP English four.
It's not offered this year, right?
That's what I'm getting at. So, what Jerry was saying, that we were getting kids, so if they take AP English three their junior year with Ms. Ramon at Neville High School, they get English one-on-one credit. If they now take English four with Ms. Sanford, and they pass that, they get English one-on-one credit, same exact credit. On top of that, in that same class, they were taking a PLETS, which gets you English one-on-one credit. On top of that, they were taking dual enrollment, which gets you English one-on-one credit plus English one-on-two credit. So what we did is we met and tried to figure out the best use of options. So those kids that are in that English four, they're all technically right now in dual enrollment, because that gives us the most bang for the buck, they get one-on-one, one-on-two credit. The ones, those kids, there's a lot of kids that apply to Ivy League schools, or schools like Tulane, that they need that AP on their credit. What we've done is, on their schedule right now, it says AP English. So what Catherine Sanford did is she talked to all those kids that needed that, and we made the adjustment, so those kids are labeled right now as AP students. So we have not gotten rid of any of them, we have not cut any programs at all. Those kids are still in the classes they need to be in, if they want to be. We did the same thing when Mr. Chase taught AP Environmental Science and AP Biology, his kids, you'd have to meet with him at the beginning of the year and say, what do you want? Do you need AP or do you need dual enrollment? Are you going to the state school, or are you going to apply to out-of-state schools? So to maximize the money that we have, because we're a public school, we don't have unlimited resources, those kids had to decide, am I gonna take dual enrollment, because I'm probably gonna ULM, LSU, or TCU. But those kids that wanted to apply at out-of-state schools, we never denied them any of it. We said, if you wanna take AP, you can take AP. We're still doing that same exact thing with AP English four right now. So those kids that need that, we have, yes.
So are you saying that a student has to choose their college before they sign up for this class?
No.
Because they cannot take AP and dual enrollment at the same time?
So.
Is it, does anyone in that class have AP and DE that they will get on their transcript together from the certified teacher who can teach them?
But that's, it's the same credit, that's what we're saying, is those kids that, and it's not saying you have to choose your colleges, where you are applying, if the majority of your colleges that you're applying are gonna be out of state, or if you're applying to a state like this, like Tulane, that doesn't look at dual enrollment, because they don't accept the dual enrollment credit, what we're looking at is to maximize your potential for that school, is to have AP on your transcript.
So I would suggest to maximize your potential, so a kid can apply to any college, because they might not get in, because they need to take those rude shot chances, that you go back and allow them to have a certified dual class for AP and dual enrollment, why take it away if it's working?
So those kids that are AP designated right now, they're getting the dual enrollment credit.
It's not on the transcript.
Well, we can change it on the back end. When kids are, when kids are applying for.
Okay, hold on, let, let Ms. Reming speak.
When kids are applying for college right now, the transcript they send is what they've taken, it's not showing what they're taking now. What we do is at the back end, and this is what the district is, is aligned with, the district, myself, and an English teacher met for almost two hours, it may not have been the English teacher that was teaching the class, she was dropping her son off at college. I didn't want to bother her, that was family time, so I went to the next best option we could. And she met with me and Jerry for about two hours, and we looked at what was the best possibility to get all these kids what they need. Is it gonna work for everybody? Maybe there'll be some that it doesn't, but we're doing the best we can, and it worked for Mr. Chase in the many years, and he was successful teaching AP Environmental and AP Biology, that those kids had to decide to dance on it. They met with their parents, they could talk with the counselors, Mr. Chase provided them information, so they knew what was best for them, you know, the degree or.
Well, I just don't understand why they have to make a choice when we have a certified teacher, the only one in the district, to teach both at the same time, like we've been doing three years.
She did it, those kids are in the same class.
Right, and they will be designated when they apply for their schools that they're in, but AP or DE, they get to pick.
Yes.
They get to pick, so they don't have to pick one, they can say they're invested.
You have to ask an AP test to get AP credit, otherwise, that's the thing, the AP exams, your entire education comes down to your AP test. If you don't pass the AP test, you're not gonna be able to get. So you have to figure out a strategy there, let me sign up for dual enrollment, let me get dual enrollment credit and take the AP test.
Yes.
And then, and then one way or the other, you're gonna get your college credit, take a shot at the AP exam, which is very hard, and, and get one of those two credits. What we're situating, what we're saying is, we're on the backside, if you pass the AP exam, you get the.
And that is what the district has said, and we were agreeing with them on, if they pass that test, that's all, we're not denying that other.
So if you take the AP test, y'all pass it, on the back end, you don't.
That's actually better.
I don't know, I'm just saying, like, kids to be the clear.
Correct. For dual enrollment, you have to have, you have to have a certain number of college hours that have, give you the graduate hours.
So, and just like, already.
Yeah, you have three hours.
Okay, y'all, I, I love, I love the discussion and I love the clarification because it is, is complicated. However, we're still at Agenda Item E, and we need to move this along. So might I recommend, since most of these questions are coming from Neville students, that, yes, hold on one second, that you all schedule a meeting with Mr. Hanks, because he is very amiable to that, and I know when I went in and asked these similar questions, he was very helpful about it.
I think we have a good Neville panel, where we can do this question, we don't hand.
Okay, Mr. Hanks, go ahead, hold on, Ms. not, Ms., hold on.
A lot of individual meetings.
Okay, Mr. Hanks.
Real quick, we're, because one of the other misconceptions going around is that we're not offering dual enrollment or Biology anymore, dual enrollment, certain things. The reason being, Mr. Chase left July, I was in Japan at the time, I couldn't, wasn't even really hired as a principal at the time, yet either. So, what, when that happened, the deadline to have a dual enrollment Biology teacher had passed, the teacher that's teaching AP Biology right now is dual enrollment certified, but per the university requirement, they have to be cert, they have to be applied for before a certain time period. So next year, that same teacher will be offered, we'll have dual enrollment Biology again. It's just this year, the deadline had passed by the time we were, we were able to get a teacher, a teacher in place.
So, I, I'm, thank you, and I'm gonna recommend that maybe the district work on something to help people understand AP dual enrollment in, like, for dummies, because as, as a parent, I was not AP or dual enrollment when my children are, so I need to understand these things, so maybe something moving forward. Okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you, Mr. Hanks. Okay, so we're on F, no, yeah, yes, secondary science course progression. Does y'all, Mr. Mayhew?
Yeah, all you do is. Okay, I think your question was about the course progression for science, so, because our Biology scores were really low, we met with some of the teachers in our, in our schools to discuss how we could better prepare our students for success on the Biology lead test, and the recommendations that overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly came up was that we would change the progression, make it to, uh, into the sophomore year instead of the freshman year, but to get them ready, then we would offer bring Environmental Science down, because there were standards and topics that are taught in Environmental Science that would get them ready for the Biology. Also, I have Mr. Chase, who was the science teacher, was part of that conversation, if y'all want to discuss that with him, but that was the, really the main reason that that was done, because in science, there's not really a true progression, like there is in, in math, because it just says that you have to have four sciences, they don't, the state doesn't care when it comes to graduation purposes, what were they coming in? But for us, and for the benefit of our students, how will they perform on the lead test, and they need that lead test to graduate, we needed them to be better prepared, and that was our attack on how we were gonna prepare our students for Biology. Either against Mr. Chase?
All right. Does anybody have any questions? I cannot remember who asked me this question or why it was asked.
I think it was, what?
Can you stand, I'm sorry.
I mean, again, I understand that we are talking about the greater good, but we're also hindering kids that need these additional sciences to move forward. One of the things that I've talked to many parents about, that made a huge difference in the quality of colleges that they were accepted to, had to do with the fact that Neville kids were graduating with five advanced sciences, because they were doubling up on science. Not every kid wants to get out at maybe, some kids are staying to, to finish and to be better. So like, we keep making these blanket decisions that affect like two classes, and then all the kids that come after them are being punished for it.
No, no, you're really not, Mr. Hanks, wait, so, what's happening a lot is our seniors, they're leaving after three periods or four periods. So what we have to do if we want to have those AP classes, we have to, we have to cram every AP class into the first three periods of the day, because we're limited on where the seniors are staying. Rust and high, these kids have to stay in, they don't have five periods, they either go first through fifth, or someone will say go three through seven, oops, I'm sorry, that's me, my bad, I'm sorry. So if we had the seniors around more, yes, we'd have more chances for them to take more things, but we, but what happens is with kids leaving and, and having early checkout, I'm not from around here, that was formed me when I moved here. And I stayed, I stayed an entire day at school my senior year, and I took as many things as I could. There's a lot of opportunities for our kids if they stay at school here, if we could, because I, like I said, we'd love to have an AP class we offered at six period, but we can't, because if we do that, then we're limited in what we can do with those kids. So if, if, if we could get to the point where seniors want to say, I'm not gonna just leave and have an easy senior year, and I want to push myself, we will have those classes. I don't know, that's not on me, that's.
Mr. Hanks, hold on one second, so, is this, is this at all three high schools, the seniors leave at noonish?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah, I don't know that you're gonna give kids, especially seniors.
I, I could do three hundred.
But I'm, but what I'm saying is, there is an opportunity for culture change in that you communicate incoming freshmen, this is not, this is ending, the district has decided.
That's the reason, as, as I always tell students when I'm around them.
But that means y'all have to speak to the will to make it happen, because it has to come from y'all to make that happen.
Some of them have to have to, because they have to work.
No, and that I'm fine with, but there's a lot of kids, the majority of kids, and that's why originally it was started for kids that had to have a job, and I think that's perfectly fine, and I, and I admire that, my son did that last year, he worked himself.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanks, I appreciate that. Does anybody have any other questions about the science progression? Okay, we're moving on.
So, so is physical science not gonna be offered in eighth grade anymore, is that the decision for any children, not even gifted or honors children?
I'm seeing Mr. Chase.
Is Mr. Stapp still?
Mr. Stapp.
You have four plates.
Oh.
As I meet you.
Nobody puts baby in the corner. You know, I'm kidding, Coach.
Absolutely.
Hey, how are you? Uh, could I have a question, one more time, I have a little question in the back.
Is the decision for no more physical science in eighth grade for all students, including honors and gifted children?
It's similar to the way the high school goes, it all comes down to accountability. So at the junior high level, you know, we have the grow and the achieve portion, we'll get the thrive. So it all comes down to what we take at the end of the year of our three through eight assessments from the state, our LEAK tests, our LEAK scores. Our physical science is different than algebra one. We were not given a test to get the score. So our scores were not, our students that were taking the physical science weren't taking the test. And we were not getting our accountability points on that, which some of our highest grossed high school students weren't getting counted in our scores. So we had to make some adjustments on that.
So it was a scoring state issue?
Yes, ma'am.
You decided to remove physical science?
Yes, ma'am. It, it comes down to, we have to, we're held to an accountability standard at the state level. My job's tied to that. Our teacher's job is tied to, to.
I think it's gonna make things worse though, because parents will not send their children to the school. They'll send them somewhere where they can get this content, right?
Yes, ma'am. Well, yes, ma'am.
I understand the prediction.
I understand, you know, and I, and I see that too, you know. And, uh, we wish we could fit everything. We did have substantial growth this year, we've grown almost sixty kids.
Yeah.
Coming into the junior high, so we're up to five hundred and fifty-two students.
Thank you, Coach Stapp. So I think, um, again, it's important that you have some takeaways from this and, um, and that's that you speak to your legislative members with their concerns that are, and, and share the real world implications of those decisions and how it's playing out, um, in these scenarios. Because I think that's important. All right, we're gonna move on to C-Tag Grant. There was a question, do I need to explain why this is on the agenda?
I don't, if you can give me some guys, I would be worried.
Okay, so the question was, um, why are we told we could not apply for the C-Tag grant?
We weren't told we, we couldn't apply. Uh, and I'm Dr. Heron, who, I'm over federal programs, how are y'all doing? Um, we found out about this grant at, at the ninth hour. Uh, sometimes the state bills the plane in the air, and that was just one of these cases. Uh, we even had, when I was asked about this, I provided the newsletter where they extended it for three days because nobody applied. Furthermore, we did apply for it last year and we already got it. So when you look at all the items on here, we've already done it with the qualified staff that we have. So we would have been applying for a grant and then our community members may have been asking us why we didn't spend the money on the grant. If we don't have the bodies to complete all of the tasks on here, then we would have, we could only spend it on one thing and we've already done it. We did it last year.
So the question came from, um, one of the robotics programs and it was why, like, so did any of this funding go into the robotics at Clark or at, um, Neville?
So this funding would not have gone to robotics at all whatsoever. This funding was simply to certify teachers in computer science. It had nothing to do with funding robotics, I'm not sure where that. It literally came from, to get a Code.org certification, Ignite Initiative, Energize Initiative, Louisiana STEM Pathway. These were all for trainings for teachers. It had nothing to do with them getting any materials.
Okay. Can we look for some grants for those?
We already are, and once we finalize that, we've talked about it today, uh, once we finalize that guidance, we'll be sent to principals so that they can determine who they want to, um, take on those initiatives.
Okay.
But we are still going all the other student activities.
Thank you, Amy and Holly, any other questions? Just this question.
I'm just wondering, who's responsible for writing these grants?
Who's responsible for writing the grants? Are you doing that for these? Yeah, so we still don't have a grant writer for the district, right?
I do have a master's in grant writing from Louisiana Tech University.
Oh, that's amazing, okay, wonderful, thank you. But you're not, that's not your only job. Okay, that's important, right, but thank you. Skill, yes, I get that, okay, wonderful, thank you for that. Okay, we're moving on to, any other questions? Okay, moving on to H and I, attuned.
Can I do those together if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Okay. So we've already kind of talked to you all about attune, we updated the school board, we've done the community portion of it, we've talked to principals, we've talked to teachers, uh, we've surveyed the community. We were given a set of federal funds that we can only spend on attune to continue the strategic planning work. Uh, so that's what these two items are for. One of them is for the actual contract with attune to come in and do the strategic planning. The second part of this, which is the, um, CARE and SPAR tool, these are for surveys, so that way we can understand, uh, what are teachers' issues, uh, on the campus, how are principals feeling about everything, how the district staff members feel, that's what the SPAR tool will do. The CARE tool is something that we're going to support our principals specifically, as well as our district staff, because it will allow, um, principals to have what's called the LER, the Educators Group Report on an app where they can much, they can, uh, do their observations a lot faster. If you've done that LER training and we have principals in your room who can access to it, it's a lot of questions, you're looking for a lot of things. This just simply literally puts it in the palm of their hand where they can go in and check and support them so they can make these done a little bit more efficiently.
Okay, so I'm looking at the, um, word stream number two, Vision for Student Learning and Portrait of a Graduate. Um, does this offer opportunities for parental input? Because I'm thinking about some of the conversations that have been had here tonight about what, what do our graduates?
That's actually one of the initiatives that we're working on. We did have last year in May, it was short notice, but we did have last year in May, a, the opportunity for all parents to come in and talk, and we looked at curriculum, we did summer swamp, we did a full presentation. So the opportunity is there.
How many do you have show up?
Mr. Critzer, how many people were at that meeting? When I had the parent involvement meeting, about how many people showed up? Every school was titled, every kid. I think we had three people. It, it, that particular meeting was not. Right, but it was for the whole, it was just parents in general. We'll have one for attune as we begin phase two, which is what we're asking you all to.
So you haven't had.
Right.
All right, and you said there's a grant covering these costs?
Yes, ma'am, it's the Strong School. Strong, it's not Strong Start, because Strong Start's what we used to have. It's, it's the Strong School initiative where they literally told you to go with attune and this is what we're doing.
Okay, is there any action you need this committee to take on this?
I'm willing you all to vote on this so then that way it can be on the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, hold on, okay, we have motion and second questions from those in attendance. Mr. Critzer, please come to both of you.
If I'm looking at my notes, I got parents.
Didn't we have this presented on February twenty-fifth of this past year? Yeah, with that, in one of the curriculum meetings. And, and I only asked for this. I, I got.
So this is, so question, this is, um, a continuation. Uh, so we've already been working with the two. This is like two point O. Okay, so this isn't, this is a continuation, so it is new. So yes, we did.
I just thought we'd already approved the funding for this for the two points, didn't we?
Yes, Coach. Honestly, I thought the same thing.
Okay, well, that Superintendent Moore, well.
I honestly thought the same thing as well, when they told me to bring it back. So they kept sending me the document signed, of course, I wasn't gonna sign it because I didn't wanna sign something before that approved, so we brought it back to me.
So you have it for, for what date?
February twenty-fifth.
Okay.
What, what did we do on February twenty-fifth, Dr. Heron? Oh, of course, hang on, hang on. And, and look, I just thought you were already, you're good.
So, we did have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that was approved utilizing a similar funding source. That was last year with last year's fiscal money. This year, we were awarded, not every district was, but we were awarded, based on our work with the tune, an additional one hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. We could only use it for attune. It was based on the work that we've already shown the state that we're willing to do. A lot of that goes to Mr. Moore's relationships he's building down there, our chief academic officer, the relationship that they're building. They trust us to fix the ship, so that's what this money is for, it is a brand instead of money.
Great answer, call for question.
Okay, so, um, any other questions about this? Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carried. I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.